Good evening. My name is Matt Lawless. I serve as Scottsville Town Administrator. Reviewing the County of Scottsville reporting and meeting stream for the regular meeting of Town Council. Today is Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting has moved from its regular date per town policy because of the holiday observed yesterday, Monday, the sixteenth. A meeting is held in compliance with Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the state's open meeting laws. The meeting is held in person at the Town Office, four oh one Valley Street in Scottsville. There are also opportunities for the public to attend remotely by phone or online. This meeting includes a public hearing advertised pursuant to state law and a general public comment period. The local time here now is fifteen minutes until seven o'clock. It goes to start time for the meeting. We're still getting set up and assembling our forum polls meeting, so I'll mute this line now. If you're viewing this meeting in the future on our YouTube channel, thank you. You can skip ahead on the recording fifteen minutes of dead air and you can see us come to work. Thank you.
I ask the town clerk to call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Uh, Hyson.
Here.
There.
Here. Thank you. I'll ask you to join me in Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands and to this law of liberty and of broad Thank you. May be seated. Before I ask for approval of the consent calendar, does anybody have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask for motion to approve the consent calendar, which is the approval of this agenda. The approval of past minute meeting, meeting minutes for December twelfth and nineteenth. Approval of the financial report for December of last year. And approval of the renewed Scottsville Albemarle Police Mutual Aid Agreement, which you see a copy of in your package there. Do I hear a motion? No motion to consent?
I move to accept the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is a public forum. Now, everybody's here probably because of the um public hearing later on in the agenda, but if anybody has anything on their mind other than proposed property development where the tire plant used to function, now is your time to come forward and speak. And if there's no one wishing to speak, we will move on to item number four, which is the mayor's report, which is basically nothing new on what I reported at the work session last week, other than I had a meeting with our clerk Javier and I met with Supervisor Price last, end of last week, just to go over things that the county was working on. And that's been the thrust of my activity since the end of last week. Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to report?
I just want to say I'm excited to see everybody here today. Thank you for coming to express your opinions. We really, really are excited to hear what you have to say, whatever you want to uh give us in terms of input. So thank you for coming out tonight and those of you also who are online.
Item number five is reports of charter committees, planning commission, ARB. I like to include everybody in this. I'll ask Councilman Basset if he has any reports on events committee right now.
No updates. I was sick last week, so I didn't get to hold the meeting I was planning. We will continue those after this week.
All right, we missed you at the work session. Glad you're feeling better.
Sad I missed it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bullock?
Yep, um, so I chaired the architectural review board, for those of you who don't know. And our major point of business at our last meeting was a review of our inventory of homes in our historic overlay district. Um, every year we do a review of the condition of those properties because historic preservation is important to us here. Um, the review focuses on conditions overall, but we're mostly concerned with conditions with properties that have fallen under poor condition, which means they are either unsealed in some way or they face imminent structural problems. And so, um, at our last meeting, we reviewed those properties rated poor and also paid attention to those rated fair, meaning problems may be imminent. Um, as part of our process, we're going to have our resident architect on the board come down to Scottsville and do another survey. Sort of take a closer look at those properties. And then at our meeting in February, we will finalize our inventory. Um, that's important for the council because those properties are very poor. Uh, the property owners will receive a notice that they need to meet with the ARB within ninety days um, to get a COA certificate of appropriateness um, on the books to show that they're starting to make adequate progress to remediate the problem. So I'll be able to share more about that finalized list in February.
Okay, any questions for either Mr. Bissett or Mr. Bullock? Mr. Gritzko, anything on planning commission?
We did not meet this month, Mr. Mayor, although there was an email with a question. I didn't know if, Matt, you wanted to respond to that a little bit.
Um, in, in short, the um agenda as opposed to an adopted is correct and we can be stopped on the process on sixty and sixty and eighty.
Signs?
Uh, nothing news. Last week.
Okay.
Looking on some January projects.
All right, sounds good. Uh, Mr. Hyson? Government services.
Government services are always very busy with many things. We had a meeting and we looked at, uh, we, we looked at the values policies and procedures of town maintenance. Um, we looked at some of the grants that have been, looking at a procedure for grants in the future and tracking them. Uh, we looked at the budget uh, and the website and both of those are going to be, uh, we put it down the agenda, uh, having some restraints on spending of the budget and also, uh, uh, getting money to work on web design, approve of web design. So the web and the budget are, are are the two big ones that we're going to be talking about. And that's later on, uh, at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hyson? Mr. Payne, you got anything to add this evening?
No, I'm just trying to, Mr. Payne, yeah.
Okay. Well, we welcome all of you here tonight, and this is not going to be like last time. We're not going to cancel things on you. You're here for a purpose and you're going to have a chance to speak. A couple of the ground rules are, uh, since we do have a large crowd and we want everybody to have an opportunity to speak that wants to speak. Um, Javier will be timing you. Uh, I think five minutes is fair. Uh, had you come to the five-minute mark, uh, if you're still speaking, I will ask you to finish up real quick, okay? So the podium is open and did Echelon want to make any introductory remarks?
This is the opening.
This is the opening of the public hearing.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. Uh, we just really wanted to thank everyone involved with this process. I think the project has frankly greatly improved from the initial concept and where we are at this point. We'll actually do the feedback and ideas from really everybody in this room and online and everybody who's participated, not just Town Council and Planning Commission. But certainly by excellent work by Town Staff, both recently with these recent processes and over the last two years, I've worked together on the site. Initially, I want to make sure all the community voices, voices, both those in support and those in opposition have provided a great dialogue. And several of the ideas that came from those have prompted the true business of the project. So we thank you for this evidence that a healthy public dialogue in a group is, we embrace that. Uh, ultimately, this is a choice for Town Council to make and we respect that. What do you want for Scottsville? Uh, in the real sense, we believe that this is a choice between low-end, a low-rent industrial space that could be replicated really anywhere else with minimal financial benefits or a noteworthy, memorable multi-family project that we are all proud of. One with extraordinary financial benefits in the town. So really, it's a question of merit. Does the town want to be known at this undeniably very large site for low-end storage space, trailers and construction materials? Or for something special that can't be done anywhere else? Scottsville likes to be different than Albemarle County, uh, the rest of Albemarle County. That's it. That's great. Our project is something that's very unique, a redevelopment of an important historic site. One sure to garner positive media and even awards as it embodies the best practices of community growth. Whereas the industrial option is an afterthought. Really, it's a space filler that could be done. But it's really just continuing evidence of not really having a plan for the site. The industrial will produce the traffic that everybody is concerned about. But none of the financial benefits or other items that you can be proud of to offset those discrepancies. So again, what does Town Council want? The decision tonight will become part of the town narrative and identity. There are indignities that go along with population loss in the prime. There are fiscal strains that come from shrinking budgets. We've heard several times the concerns, uh, and protests by citizens about declining services. Those are difficult to manage with a shrinking budget. This is an exciting opportunity that we encourage you to embrace. We believe it's responsible growth. We believe it's historic redevelopment that will introduce new people, ideas and revenues. It's an extraordinary opportunity to create a novel solution for regional affordable housing in the town. Your aging population will have somewhere to move to continue to enjoy the town. New folks will have an opportunity to move here and enjoy Scottsville and contribute to the community. The factory will no longer be idle and lighting on the other side of a chain link fence. It'll be vibrant and interesting with residents walking dogs and people using trails to go back and forth. The commercial space, a great idea born from planning commissions, could be an immunity jam, a daycare. And there likely will be a gym or possibly a medical office just given the initial feedback we've received from effective tenants just over the last couple of weeks. My point is the future is bright with the factor in redevelopment option. Now, a parallel track is the tip opportunity with the county. And I've told you before, I've been surprised at the enthusiasm by the county, how they've embraced that. What an extraordinary moment and a financial opportunity. I think, uh, Mr. Lawless told me that the equivalent with the, with the factory redeveloped site could produce through this tip would be the equivalent of a town-wide thirty-five cent tax rate. That's huge for a decade. That's amazing. The fiscal opportunities you will inject into this town council with the size of the next ten years. Certainly will do a great deal to right your municipal budget whales. So a decision tonight will define this community. It's a decision between the crossbreeding of managing the finding population or embracing a brighter future. We always want to be on the side of optimism and opportunity. We hope that the Town Council does as well. But whatever the outcome, we thank everybody for their input and feedback, the comments, positive and in opposition, and we thank everybody for the time and attention.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, floor is open. Speakers, step forward. State your name and where you live, please. And you'll have five minutes. Yes, sir. Come forward.
Hi, my name is Mitch Carr and I'm not a town resident, but I rock out of Farm, four miles from town of Warren. Scottsville officially became a township in eighteen eighteen and became incorporated in eighteen forty-three and in nineteen ninety-four, the town annex, an additional eight hundred and fifty-six eight. I tell you that to tell you this, the reasons for the incorporation, the annexation was to keep local politics and local control local. The town was and should still be fiercely invested in controlling its own destiny. This project risks all of that with minimal foreseeable benefits. By allowing this project to go through, every resident is surrendering one half of their voting power to residents of one apartment complex. It almost probably doubles the number of residents and they will be at a voting block and able to control the local elections and votes forevermore. A terrible scenario would be them gaining control of council and spending lots of your money to alleviate their newly created traffic problems. A worst-case scenario would be for them, over time, abandoning the historic culture, architectural review and planning commissions and even going so far as to abandon the town charter and revert back to the county. Scottsville is already treated like the ignored stepchild of Albemarle and it cannot afford to risk losing what it's barely struggling to keep. Please don't think it cannot happen. It can. As the actual, as to the actual merits of the project, the developer freely admits that most residents will be young people on the way to somewhere else, which means most will have no interest in the long-term consequences of their votes. Even if some choose to stay in Scottsville, once this development is completed, there will be no place for them to buy and become a permanent legacy resident, even if that was their dream. Secondly, the grant for the tax credit of twenty-plus million dollars to keep the facade of an old building should be replaced with columns and historic architecture on major roads. Not a slap-together tire plant that on its best day will still be ugly. Without that twenty million dollar grant, the project could not finance its stand on its own, sort of like buying a Ferrari using a lottery ticket as a down payment. Third, sixteen hundred dollars a month is not affordable housing by any stretch, and there are no guarantees that those properties will even be rented to local folks. Third, sixteen hundred dollars a month is not affordable housing by any stretch, and there are no guarantees that those properties will even be rented to local folks. The rising tide of higher rents commanded by this project will affect all local rents, making existing housing less affordable thus defeating the purpose. That's fine for landlords of which I'm one, but not so good for renters. This project will raise local rents, not lower them. Fourth, the threat that the developer can by right turn to some commercial facility with embassy semi-trucks coming going is a red herring. If those numbers trunched, that would have happened ten years ago when the economy was booming. Let's someone come back with a better proposal, book the mixed use with a chance for homeownership. If not, let it sit, no harm, no foul. Lastly, I would like to say that the vote for this project should be at minimum be put to the citizens as a referendum. As by default, it is above the town council's conscience and even their responsibility to make such a town altering decision without the overwhelming public support of current stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Next. I know everybody didn't sit up, didn't come up here tonight just to sit and listen to one person speak, so now's your chance.
Ladies and gentlemen, council and town, I'm Paul Ray, I'm a former member of the county. Both of you know me. Anyway, the, uh, thanks concerning me is, you know, this, this country from the federal state, local government is founded on democratic principle. Okay, why don't you put this to a vote to the people instead of bypassing the people completely? And that's, I'm going to keep it short and simple and sweet. That's what I want to hear.
Okay, this is zoning matter. The zoning matters handled by. I know what you're saying, sir, but I'm telling you why it's done. The way it's done is because there is our obligation to take the planning commission's re, uh, work, look at it and then decide whether to rezone this property.
That is the case, and I think the town people need to get rid of all special places changed.
Well.
And that's up to the town people. Like I said, I'm on the boundary of that, a little bit in town, but I mean, I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in this town in twenty-seven years.
Sure.
And you guys, and you're going to spoil the town with. Alright, I'm done, guys.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnett.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Larry Barnett. We lived down here from nineteen six. And we still own three buildings and two little little property on, on, uh, that same street. And what I would like to do, and I, I'm, I initially, I was very concerned about the development in Scottsville. Now, let me tell you, and I'm sure a lot of you remember this. Oliver Putner, I was in real estate for forty-three years, twenty-nine of them in Scottsville. And Oliver Putner, we sold him Dr. Simpson's building. And the ARB put a stop work order when he wanted to finish the little carriage house. And we built a kitchen and, and the town council upheld it, the ARB decision, and Oliver Putner moved out of town. Now, what do you think Scottsville would look like if he still lived here? And I can remember, and I congratulate this town council and the mayor because they are pro-growth. And the businesses need people. Oliver Putner, when we, we appealed it to the town council and the town council has been burdened of operating. And I said, for God's sake, people in far down at the public party. And they can walk three blocks and uphold the ARB decision. I sold the Red House construction site, nine acres. I have a young couple that wanted to build eighteen townhouses there. And price only one ninety to two ten. And for old people like me, like eighty-six year old, they had the main right there. Oh, a bedroom, and a bath, a full bath. For young people like most of you here, they, they had a family room on the first and a kitchen, and the upstairs was a bedroom, a master bedroom and a full bath, three bedrooms, two baths. The town turned it down because of parking and traffic. You know what? We appealed it to the town council and the council upheld the ARB decision. And I, I can remember saying to the town council and the mayor at that time, for God's sake, to get vote, what we're talking about thirty-six cars on Route Wayne. Now, if you tell me, and you know that still hasn't been developed? Now, the development and I congratulate our town council and, and the mayor, Ron Smith, and let's give him my hand for breaking the tie on that housing thing and the businesses need growth. They need business. They need, they need people. And for God's sakes, you, you know, I, I'm retired from real estate. My wife, and it's a joke. My wife said, my life is expired in March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. My wife said, I will shoot you if you renew that handy. And I'll tell you what, she knows where my guns are with the, aren't, aren't retired. We're still getting several calls a week looking for apartments. I've got two people right now, one lady Jennifer works at the family and she needs an apartment within thirty days. And, and another lady works at the food line and, and she needs an apartment. Now, I, I know most people here are against two hundred apartments. I'll guarantee you they will not rent. They will not rent. We don't have two hundred people looking for apartments. And I understand that the builder says, and I understand this, the builder doesn't want to build. But I would love to see seventy, fifty-five, fifty, sixty, seventy apartment there. But you know what? The builder said, no. It's either two hundred or I'm walking. And the town's going to give three hundred thousand dollars. And I'm, I'm telling you, there's no way in the world. And I can understand where the builder is going. He doesn't want to leave half of the building. He owns tire factories. And Dr. Hertz is one of my favorites in Scottsville. Of all, all times. And I can understand that he does not want to, to leave half of the building vacant. But I can tell you, there is no way in the world two hundred people are looking for apartments. Scottsville is in Albemarle County, so we have the best schools in the state here, Buckingham as a starting forest school.
Thank you so much. I, we want to be fair to everybody, so your, your time is up, Mr. Barnett. That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Michael Rolls. I, uh, live nearby and outside of the township limits. I shop here. I eat at restaurants and I walk away. That said, uh, I want to throw out a term. It's called impact mitigation. And my concern here is not whether or not you do something, it's how you do it. And that's what I'd like to talk to you guys about. First of all, the, um, the concern that I have is that, uh, you don't do a job that's protective of your children and my children and what's coming down the road. What I don't want to see happen is you grab the shiny object only to find out that it's hooked to a lead weight that drives it, but it was down. And that's something that concerns me because I know you've had a number of people that have talked about it, and I left last time with a comment, high, high density residential use is the, present you with the highest demand for services and a very low source of revenue. Now, you talk about revenue, you, you're going to have to ask about, what are we building and why are we building it? The, uh, I know that there was a young fireman that used the term and he used a statistic from EMS, I guess, but he estimated two point five people for the apartment. And he's saying, okay, there's, you know, they're looking at five hundred people. So if you ask yourself a few questions, first of all, you know, traffic and transportation. I didn't see in the staff reports that I've got much addressed in terms of traffic and transportation. You're going to bring two hundred, uh, occupants at least, and let's say five hundred people down here. How are they going to get to and from? Are they all going to drive cars? There's no regular bus line down here. There's no public transportation. So if it's affordable housing, are these affordable housing people all going to have shiny new cars? If not, how are they going to get to and from what they may hope is a job somewhere? Because there's no public transportation down here. What are you building? Are you building a haven? Or are you building trap? I'm using improper term for some people. Are you building a ghetto? Because those people are trapped. I'm talking about people that would be living there. You look at what is the sudden influx and increase of people at one time is going to happen. I'm not talking about don't have progress because I don't think there are many people that wouldn't like to see the skeletal remains of that, uh, factory somehow revitalized to the benefit of the community. Well, what is it benefit of the community? What's going to serve the community best? Just having two hundred people show up, hey, your alcohol synergy will up people and they grow. Uh, I guarantee that'll happen, but, uh, maybe you'll get some minimum, if you don't get the tax, you're going to have to have a tax mechanism in place. Mr. Quick last time was very, uh, informative in terms of surrounding counties. You don't have the mechanism in to get the revenue to support it. Now, you're going to put five hundred people out there. Your law enforcement's out there on a, on a, an argument in the parking lot. You got no coverage for your businesses about to have service here, uh. You've got fire department and the fire department talked about fire flow. They also talked about response time and what are you going to get? Typically, it's up to the people that want to make the money and the developers to come up with the solutions for you and mitigation measure. What are they going to do to mitigate the negative impact of those services? And I haven't heard it. You had people talk about police calls. I read the comments in the staff report. I'm sorry, just saying out of town people are a problem, our locals are not. That I'm caught in. The number of calls you're going to get, there's tons and tons of research in terms of law enforcement and the number of calls generated by high density housing. Nobody's even addressed that. You've got police services. He was going to pay for it. You're going to have to triple your police force. Well, Albemarle County might help us, okay? Really? Mutual aid. What's mutual about that? I, I, I'm not going to go there. My history is, I've thirty-eight years in small government. Unfortunately, I'm a refugee in California. But I will tell you, there's an address. One, they talked about fire flow and water soaps. But somebody talked about, I didn't hear anybody ever talk to the people that run your sewage plant to say, uh, what are we going to do with the excess gray water, uh, from dishwasher, laundry and all those toilets question? Is that even addressed? Okay, uh, those are significant concerns. And I also know when you're talking about traffic, other people say, well, well, we don't want trucks. Well, if there's going to be trucks, do we, do you have mitigation measures to make people improve the roadway? Do you have mitigations? Maybe you need a traffic control that addresses that, uh, that, you know, I know they put some fails at Spa out there, but I don't know if that is really going to cover that little stretch of roadway. The concerns I have is that, again, you don't go to something that's going to cause an immediate increase of two.
Yeah, that's all right. Thanks. Thank you for your comments. So thank you, sir.
What's that?
I say thank you for your comments. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Name is Ward.
Oh, there, there, Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of sorry. Frankie Ward. Uh, it's been probably twelve, it's not released since I've been here for the most of the evening. I used to be the regular one. But my husband passed away, so I'm just interested in it now until this subject came up. And then I find out tonight that all the property tax that we pay on our properties in Albemarle. Goes to Albemarle County. And I don't know if we get, and I never knew that. And it seems to me like something should be done to bring that money back to Scottsville. And it can be done if you really want to. It'll be a fight. I'm sure nobody wants to give up money. But I think we need it here in Scottsville very, very badly from everything that I see. Now, the other thing that I really, what really bothered me was Mike, this, uh, the rubber man, as we all know, it's been a few years. And I sort of know what they want to do up here with the housing of, uh, commercial property. And if it turns in more cars, more trucks, that's fine. Scottsville, I've always considered the armpit of Albemarle County because that's the way we're treated down. I remember Jose at one time was calling the town of Jose until I raised so much hell about it. They quit calling it that because Scottsville is the only town in Albemarle County. And I want everyone to know that I love Scottsville. I'm here since you arrived in nineteen fifty-five. And I never want to leave you. But something has to be done to get more businesses. And if we don't have people here, the, the services are not coming, businesses are not coming. What business we want are coming to a town with a, with the number residents that we have now. You have to get the residents first. That's going to draw on it. And once some business looks down here and says, wow, look at Scottsville. They have so many people down there in the voice. To get to Charlottesville. I think then the business can open up providing the ARB doesn't, uh, X out where they want to put your businesses. So I would like to see that. And if we have some trucks, there are little businesses that can operate without a truck. We've had trucks coming from this town, uh, from trouble plant. Running poor blast. We have trucks that come through town now that doesn't cause problems. If we have more trucks, that's all right. We can handle it. But we need to have bodies here involved in your business. Without the businesses, Scottsville is going to sit right here and continue to be the armpit of Albemarle County. And I don't like that one bit. So please see what you can do about getting the tax money, the rental tax money, Albemarle County's back into the coffers of Scottsville because we need the money here. There's no doubt about it.
Thanks, Frankie. Mr. Mayor.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Lanes and I live about seven miles north of the Grove Estates in Savannah County. And I'm coming, I came here about five, six years ago and Scottsville has been a dream. I'm from the suburb of Philadelphia. And we have chickens now and vegetable garden and trails and woods. If anybody wants to come pick up sticks, you know, I know we've got lots of sticks to pick up, but we're also seventy and we're looking at each other and thinking, you know, how much longer can we sustain these thirteen acres and, and where I come from, change happens all the time. New gas station, new business, new apartment building, old one torn down. It's not anything that is uncomfortable, but it is change. But the thing is, when I heard about these apartments coming, I thought, oh, good. When I'm eighty, I've got some place to go and, and I'll be able to walk to the library and I'll be able to walk into town. And I just stood up here today because I just wanted my voice to be heard. So, thank you.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, folks, thanks for allowing us to talk tonight. Um, my name is Michelle Kennedy. Uh, I live and manage a Bella Farm, which is, um, just up here at Carter's Bridge on Route Twenty. Um, and I would like to speak tonight in favor of the development, um, and in favor of the housing project in particular, um, from a personal level and as a, as a Um, from a personal level and as a, as a frequent visitor to Scottsville. Much preferring it over the other town, as it were, for thirteen years now. Uh, I, I really do echo a lot of things that others have been saying. These businesses need people to sustain them. I have been here since the Barnstead building was. Um, the Mexican restaurant and before that it was the sort of taverny place. And before that, you know, how much turnover are we seeing? How many businesses are we seeing fail? Because there's just not the town to sustain now. Um, as a manager of a farm, I employ people. Um, I have about five year round folks and about twenty-two on the payroll and seasonally in the summer. These folks are rural people. They work on the farm. They are not making a good, great wage. We're paying fifteen dollars an hour. Um, and these folks, I'm hearing more and more every single year. They cannot find a place to live. They cannot find a place to live. So when you're thinking about like who's gonna be living in these places, you know, we've heard tonight. Um, a bunch of folks, it's not necessarily gonna be folks coming in from elsewhere. It's folks who are trying to live rurally. They're trying to live their lives out here. Um, and they already are. They're commuting down already, you know, um, to get out here. And so. Uh, those, those are some reasons. And I think in general, uh, the town of Scottsville has a long history of being a bustling center. And I would love to be a little bit more of that energy coming back to the place. Um, and yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Mason. I've been down here a little over twenty years on page two, actually. I've heard a lot about what's going on with this. It makes sense to repurpose the building itself. Anything else you can get into the building aside from the? The, the living units sounds great, but the stepping out of. That development and going into, you know, the houses, that sounds great. But then adding all the other apartments around there, it just seemed to shrink. You know, going from population got now to stepping into, you know, doubling the size of the population of Scottsville if it fills up. So, I mean, from a common sense point of view, for me. It seems like if they wanna do it, you know, maybe stage, you know, do a portion of the apartments. And then maybe five, ten years down the road, you know, make another push for more development back there. And plan, but to try and take and drop that many people into Scottsville, it will give Scottsville a chance to.
Fuck.
Work towards mitigating the increased traffic from the increased population. And, you know, I don't have a whole lot to say aside from, you know, I've lived up there the, you know, the whole time I've been down here. I've been up on page and when the tire company was back there, yeah, there was a little bit of traffic. But you're talking about putting like three shifts of people back there. That are gonna be coming and going nonstop. And it just seems like that alone. Is gonna take Scottville into a different place because there's gonna have to be traffic. And I mean, Scottville is the one place in, in the county that I know of that still does not have a satellite. I used to be able to say that. Now, I'm not gonna lie about that. I like how people that, you know, so. Um, like I said, didn't have a lot to say. I just wanted to say that much. And instead of trying to do all at once, see if it can be done in a more reasonable, you know, stage. I mean, everything builds in stage. Uh, makes more sense than I.
Thank you. Next. Harold, come forward.
Well, my name is Harold. Addressed three different problems and. This all based on one simple thing that I've baked hopes and I'm not a follower of the big hope. But it is what it is. It isn't what it was. It isn't what it should be. It isn't what it could be. It is what it is. Okay, and where we are, we're twenty miles first of all. There's an, not talking down anything at all, but I'm gonna be original guessing. There's three basic industries in the United States. One is agriculture. One is, is extraction, which is mining and in our case, and the other one is transportation. We are twenty miles from any transportation route in Scottsdale. Where it's economical to bring a truck is fast and at an hour drive, no matter how many. And that is a deciding point on Sunday morning, we're moving boots. So, that's where you are. Now, let's talk about parking. There's two hundred and five units. Is there a hundred and fifty parking spaces gonna be available? Not rapid, but basic parking. Is there gonna be, how are these people that you're bringing in? Basically, how are they gonna pay for the apartment? Some of you have a remedy. A county will do it. Okay, but someone has to pay the county for that. And who's gonna pay it? The people that are here, people, children. They're not gonna pay it. It's that simple. So if somebody wants, now someone's on parking. This, the last time any parking was done in improvement was twenty-two years ago. When this car over here was over covered in the risk chemical spaces. You had twenty years to do some planning to this, your party, twenty years. And now we're up against, against, we don't have any party and now we need more people because we don't have any party. You haven't done your job, council. And the council was before you had it. No, let's see, if it's, if problem is a problem, they stop that problem. What is so awkward about that? But some of you, you, one of you at the last, last week's meeting actually said, we've been studying this factory. The whole time I've been on council and here we are now. Someone comes along and has a development, but here we are now. There's been no planning. There's been no structure. There's been nothing. And it isn't just your council. It's the councils before you. And that was on one of those conferences, bottom comic. Okay, but you did nothing, absolutely nothing. And that's where we are. And it, it really disturbs me to think that we have to acquiesce to either industrial plan that we can't. People need to make money to pay their rent. How are we doing it? And how are people gonna pay their rent no matter what it is? If you're not making money, you don't pay your rent. So, let's, let's face facts. We need both. We need, we need income in this town and we need people, but we need plenty of people that are running our way. We don't need another fenced off area. My neighbors build fences around their one acre lots with four board fences. That's a community. That's horrible. When I moved here, I hate to tell only one of those here, you know, what me is going in this way. You know, it's going. But I tore all fences down. Okay, I live, I live in town. I have nine acres. But you know who enjoys taking nine acres? The kids play hide and seek in the bushes next door to everyone. Other neighbors, you know, have ATVs around the back view. You know, some of them run their dogs. Some of their neighbors walk just to walk there. And that's a community. And it, it, it just disturbs me. I'm not sure I'm carrying on. And as far as development goes, we build a plateau park. I didn't believe it when it was built. More people came up to see my joint cars than ever visited that plateau park. And they loved it. People from Liberty University used to come up with foreign students. They didn't have a place to go home to. It was too expensive. They made a day trip up to see my front car. You know, but people hated them, you know, because they were an actual. I knew they were an actual, but you know what? I told my neighbors, as long as they're there, your property tax, yes.
Harold, your, your time's up, but thank you for speaking this evening. Appreciate it. Anybody else? This is Car.
Evening, how are you?
All right.
I am a body of heart and I live on five nine one hours road. So I am here to represent a group of people that I want to talk about. And that is the hundreds and hundreds of seventy, eighty and ninety year olds. Who are living right here in the community. I work with them all the time. They steal some dry and they are all scared to death. They're, they're all asleep right now, but they're all talking in the morning to see how you guys voted. They go through BB and T Marine now and they have a fifteen minute wait, wait. Because we all know there's one, two or three people working there. They go to Food Lion and it's a huge wait. Sometimes the employees there will sit. And let the lines go down and then the older people can go. We have a very, very large majority of even ninety year olds. You can visit them at Lumpens any day. But they're all asleep, but they're waiting in the morning to see how you guys vote. Um, so I'm not sure whether my phone will start ringing or the town will start ringing or, but I just want you all to think about them. Um, they have supported this town. Most of them are raised, um, actually born here and raised. But you can visit them at Skipper's at the Methodist Church every Thursday. They drive their car down there. They get out and they walk up there. A big population would affect hundreds of seventy, eighty and ninety year olds who have supported us for a long, long time.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey. I'm Cat, currently Assistant Chief of Fire Department. Also President of the Baseball Softball League in Scottsville, kind of talk of both.
Sure.
Moved here in nineteen ninety-two from Penn Store, small little area in Savannah County. I've been here ever since. I was a resident of the town. Now I live on the outskirts of the town. Been in the fire department since I moved here and I, I got there in ninety-five. And I'm very proud of the service that we provide. Uh, all volunteers still, thank God. Hopefully we can keep it that way. Keep the price down if you gotta. Things to consider with what you are, are about to put in. With the size of the apartments that you're talking about putting in, I, I heard the gentleman talk about Mr. Mason. Small increments were more from fire department in, 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 with you in small increments. Than in two hundred and twenty-five apartments, you're talking the possibility of three to four hundred more people. The burden that that puts on firing EMS and police, you, you guys will not see. We will see. We will see the number of increased calls. You heard the housing authority people that you had online last week in the work session. Talk about the vouchers. Those vouchers are people that cannot afford the house. They cannot afford current houses. They will not be able to afford the apartments that you're getting ready to put in. So you haven't spent anything with the people that will be moving in to help the town. You heard them say that there's a list of people with vouchers. Now, those are low income government society people that cannot afford rent. They will be put in the apartments. They, they will only pay thirty percent of their rent. The government pays the rest of it and the fire rescue and PD will pay the price for it. They will double the number of EMS calls. When you look at the apartments that you currently have, you know, using examples, last month, there was a resident who wanted to pull the fire alarm because. She needed to get back at the people in the, in the building. Nineteen calls, we went down there nineteen times, fire department in the middle of the night, middle of the day, whatever. Went down to service this, uh, the apartments. The, the contract for the maintenance on those apartments is an hour away. If we let the fire alarm ring, it's not our responsibility to reset, we should reset and the goodness of the people. Would ring for another hour, waiting for them to get you. With these apartments and the number of low income people that will come in, once the apartments don't rip. Housing people are gonna go, hey, we've got X number of people with vouchers. We can put them in there. Their smoke alarms, their remote is stuck down in the chair and they can't get it out. I know that sounds ridiculous. I just served thirty years with the city. They put these things all up over the city. They become a problem for firing EMS. And you have not thought about that. Making this big a jump without the consideration of fire and fire. Just speaking from the fireside, we had no input on anything that has been planned. Thirty homes that are going on Bird Street, there was zero input from the fire department. We need to be involved with those things with the size of the streets that you're putting in. The number of hydrants, the water line that's going in to protect it. We have to be able to gain access. The current plan for the housing on Bird Street does not meet those needs. The streets that are going in the alleyway behind it do not meet the fire department's needs to get in there if we were to fight fire. On the baseball side of things, the safety of the kids, both our fields are directly behind the school. And will be affected by the roads going in. Put two hundred and twenty-five apartments back there. We use the road that goes down to the parking area now that was the old parking lot for the tight lane. That's our overflow from the school. If you bring in more than two or three teams, there's no parking. So we have to use that area. I don't know how that would work with the new apartments coming in. So when we bring regional tournaments in, we're bringing eight to nine teams. All those parents are coming in, that business is heated. You want business in the town. I understand the town wants business. I understand having small businesses. I'm in support of the businesses. Maybe it's, we relieve some of the restrictions on signage and how the businesses want to operate. Versus telling them, no, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna give. On how you want your building to look or how you want a certain sign to be for your building. Let the businesses come in and open it up a little bit more to those guys. You're doubling our job and we do not have the manpower to do what you are doing if you bring those people in.
Thank you. Quick.
Before you start, can I, can I ask a couple of questions of that appropriate, I know on the workstation, works.
Well, it's, it's a public hearing. Your comments are normally directed to the chair and not to the members of the audience specifically.
Directed to you?
Yes.
Okay, so, so in the work session minutes, there was a unit mix at rental rates as of twelve twenty two thousand twenty two. And it had what the applicant offered as far as the mix of side and pricing? Is everybody aware of that and is that what they were indeed offering?
I couldn't tell you at this date and time because I didn't commit those figures to my memory.
Okay, well, I, I think.
I got him, Kevin.
Again, I'd like to ask you a question because I think it's somewhat important, although it makes no difference to me, but the. Apartments, fifty-six bedrooms, fifty-six one bedroom, a thousand sixty rent. Two bedroom, one thousand two hundred and sixty-three and three bedroom. one thousand four hundred and fifty-two was what they were proposing on that offering. That is something, but then I had a question as far as the, um, minimum affordability of that. If you look at sixty percent of the income, that's like forty-four thousand. And I'm just wondering, did you all do any math on that? Like a firefighter, they can't make more than that. So a single firefighter.
That's right.
If they make more than that, they may be able to rent in that.
That's right.
Okay, so just make sure I'm understanding. If you make, if you're a firefighter and you are a rescue squad worker, or a medic, or that, these departments are not fortunate. Um, just want to make sure that you understand that this is gonna make too much money.
What's the wage rate? What is the cap on the wage rate for that, you're saying?
Um, you, you know, I'm not the expert, because I really don't think it's relevant for me, because I'm thinking to be done forty-four thousand uh, for one person, fifty thousand, so we can pay them more than twelve fifty per hour each person to get above like, well, fifty per hour. Regular, they're gonna, they're not gonna get a good, I think, but I'm not, I'm not an expert on this. Because quite frankly, that's really not why I think it shouldn't be done, because I think that we should provide housing, okay? I like to go back, we can start with that now, but I like to go back to what I talked about before to make sure, because I had somebody who was a former former town candidate, did not understand the point I was trying to make, okay? What I did, I researched the fiscal service impact that the town had given. I asked some questions of area folks. I reached out to Gregory Woods, okay, who's the town manager of Orange, Dr. Craig Buckley, who was the chief of police, and I asked him the accuracy of the police impact report, the accuracy of that, and both parties said that was wrong. There's gonna be more costs associated with that. I also went to the park section, which they talked about how much was going to be needed, and I also deemed that not accurate. So then I questioned the fiscal and service impact report that was prepared by actually town staff. I talked to Tim Humeans, he's the planning director of the city of Winchester. And he said, don't consider it. Ariel Goldgreen, who actually had created a market and fiscal impact analysis for Winchester Grove that was paid for by Escalon. Both of them basically said, I was advised to not accept the fiscal and service impact report from the applicant or locality if created by either party. This would be not credible and extremely unwise. Here's what I'm saying. I get no one I don't know. The professionals that do this all the time are saying it's not credible and extremely unwise. I would say it would only be credible if prepared by unbiased third party. What I'm saying is I want you to be making decisions with accurate information, which then leads me to if it was accurate. One of the things that concerns me is we have a multi-pronged approach. Frankie, Larry, you all guilt me, okay? I'm sorry, I'm a product of them. But, but here's the thing. We look at town tax. We do not have a town tax. That is a fundamental problem with any type of laws that we are looking at doing. It's a monkey in a room. But we need a town tax. I know you don't wanna hear that, that town tax would give you the ability to stand up and actually have a vote. Right now, you do not have a vote, per se, because you don't have, you don't pay anything to the town. The business, I'm not sorry, okay? So, and so when we do not have that, we forget, if we do not have this fundamental, you know, thing. Here's, here's the thing, guys. It's not just the twenty-six from there. They were okay, and I was okay, because twenty-six is not gonna break us, okay? It's not gonna hurt us. Two hundred and five, this will start digging in their pocket, okay? But here's the thing, we, we, what do you call it? When they pick up a pen, I sat behind and worked that thing, Charlie Armstrong, I think, the work level. He picked up his pen and the water guy, he said, two hundred and fifty thousand, I think gallons of water. We only use fifty thousand, right, twenty-five to fifty, then fifty to a hundred with this, there's a hundred and fifty thousand capacity. Do you think they're gonna come in and wanna do something about rights? They're gonna want to have more people. And I'm not saying it's not okay to have more people. I'm saying that we cannot go in the proper structure we have right now without a real, a, a real estate tax and a vision. And I, and I feel bad for these folks because I like them. I do like that they wanna do something good for the town. They have good product. They, they have good things, and they're gonna stay for ten years. But to come in and say, we're gonna give you a thirty-five percent, a thirty-five cent tax rate. Yeah, as Frankie said, we need to be going to the county and, and maybe talking to them, or at least looking at these costs.
I need to get it.
Please don't allow fiscal import that. Those may not be accurate in your decision making. And, you know, just look at it down the road. This big thing up on Paul that track, that's the big one, guys. I mean, don't think that that's not the one either. Okay, and I don't, I don't know what the answers are. All I'm saying is that the way we sit right now, I saw it in Flubana, when we, when I was in Flubana as a resident, that, that the board supervisor said, well, we'll never be, we'll never have a higher tax rate than, uh, than Alamo County. Well, if you look at what could you pay on real estate taxes, it's higher. They didn't, they didn't look down the road. I don't look tomorrow, okay? I'm ten to fifteen years out. The path that you go, you accept this, unfortunately, did not physically care anymore.
Thank you, Kevin. What else?
Kind of reeling from a lot of the things I, I heard here tonight, I heard, uh, starting with wanting less voters. I, I mean, I just, anyway, uh, I'm really glad to hear that we have two members of council on uh, who are going to be in charge of the budget and making sure they supplement the three hundred thousand dollars and then the TIF money that's not going to come when you don't approve, because you, you haven't, you haven't been in favor of the project from the get-go. And so I want to hear when you talk tonight. So please let me know your plan, because what we've heard a lot of it tonight is, here's the problem. I don't have an answer, but here's the problem. And so I hope you two have an answer tonight in terms of how you are supplementing that money. Yes, at the brewery, so maybe you don't remember. So I'm so, that's money that this town needs. That TIF money is more animal tax dollars coming back into the town, and no animal county is gonna give a tax dollar back, because what is that still offering back to them? We're not, we don't wanna give them substantial housing. We don't wanna have a tourism, not really any kind of tourism, that's a tourism thing. We weren't putting any money into that. We weren't putting any money into marketing. So what are we giving them that they're gonna give us money back? So all I'm saying is, I can't wait till later on, when these folks are all gone, and I'm still gonna be here, because I wanna hear the plan for how we are supplementing that money that is not going to come from this project.
Hey, anybody else? Good one.
My name is Lisa House of the Air, I'm the standing commissioner, and, um, I've heard everything that you guys have heard from the experts and the staff and board, and a lot of the feedback as well. I definitely have my concerns about the project, but in general, I think we need to be thinking about how to make it work. Um, we have a white elephant. We have to figure out what to do with it. Well, we don't have to figure out what to do with it. They're offering us a plan. Um, I don't think it's the best plan. I don't think it's exactly what we want. I would like to see something more like what Walker Shaw recommended in two thousand and nineteen, but I rec, I understand that they're saying it's not economically feasible. And I don't know what the answer is. No person knows what the answer is. Um, you know, it's, it's hard. We've got someone who wants to invest fifty, sixty million dollars into our community. It's hard to say no to that. How do you say no to that? Um, it's also hard to hear that fifty, sixty million dollars is not gonna be enough to get us what we need. We have some shortfalls. We have budget issues. We have to figure that out. Um, yes, we're gonna have people leaving at our restaurants, shopping in our stores, but there's still gonna be a shortfall. They're gonna be paying an enormous amount of tax dollars to the county, so it's nice that that proposal came up last month. I'd like to explore that further. Um, I do have concerns about infrastructure. My only real concerns about infrastructure, though, are sidewalks. We don't have enough sidewalks. Harrison Street, Bird Street, um, hey, well, Bird is, is going to be planned for, but Paige to the Boys and Girls Club, I'm worried about our senior citizens walking through those streets. Um, I think, I think things like fire EMS, police that are provided by the county, we are going to be in a better position to bargain for that when we almost double our population. Um, I think that will, that would take some work on our part to push for that, but it'll come. When we have more people, they're going to have to plan for it. Um, it's hard to say, hey, we need to be recognized when we're five hundred people, but when we're nine hundred people, we'll get a lot more attention. Um, I did hear something that we're kind of trolling and a little ugly, um, talking about the types of people that are gonna move into this community. Again, fifty-six million dollars, they are not gonna be putting people in this community, in this development that aren't qualified. Not gonna be putting people in there with criminal backgrounds, they're probably a good number of people that are on us, they aren't gonna follow my, because we don't have the price war that they're using for. Maybe they're going to be stripped of their background checks. I don't know. We can ask them more about their rental pricing rate if you're certain about the wall of your people. And again, about affordability, they will be paying, they'll be paying thirty percent of their income. We have these safety nets, whether you use it or not, because we're a country and a community that cares about our residents. Hey, I don't envy you guys. I know it's a really hard decision, and you have a lot to think about, think we could work to.
It's, I agree.
I'm just outside of town. I believe there's a couple inaccuracies. I'd like to make sure people don't respond the wrong way. We could have a policeman or fireman, definitely qualified to live there, no matter what. The forty-four thousand number is on the lower threshold where you're getting subsidies. So that part, believe these, these research a little more, believe you probably already did. Our biggest problem is the town doesn't have enough money to exist the way we are. Without that money, period, five hundreds of thousands. And we need more fire, EMS, police, and just general infrastructure. None of these, don't plant on sidewalk, going on Bird Street near the physical church. You don't have real estate. If you look at right away, it's not public land unless you're gonna get done some from Mayor Brown's family. It's not public land, put sidewalk on. I believe the community, as I said last time at this meeting, community is really about fifteen thousand people in the last year. It grew by more than five hundred. We're used to this kind of growth. Now, it has to be controlled growth. It has to be studied. I'm not so sure it's been studied enough. I believe we might ask for some verification even tonight's comment before they leave, then I could add one. It's just too many emotions and not enough, yeah, traffic. Well, Buckingham has traffic issues, but Buckingham, that takes almost a third of their population that works at EVA. They come home in commuter vans, rather than spending the gas money and then ruining their cars, driving back and forth. I imagine some of that would happen again here. I do not think that everybody goes to work every day, all of the traffic that or I'll talk about number one, look at the apartments we have in town. Most of them have somebody home during the day. So they didn't go to work, or they didn't go out of their home to work, one of the other. Let's try not to be reactive, but let's look at how we plan for something like this, because whether it's this or something else, this town has to plan for it and accept it somehow, because this is gonna happen. I mean, construction companies would be great, but they bring a lot of baggage that we've always all have said before. The lottery is turned as far as side sway. All that will come if we don't do something about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Hey, Darren, good evening. My name is Amber Monroe, and I am an outsider who now calls this home. I've lived here for six years, and tonight I'm gonna speak on behalf of some of my peers that age in mid twenties to mid thirties. I was born and raised in California. I lived in the city, and then my parents moved us to a small town four hours north, very similar to Scottsville. As a young girl, it was one of the ardest reliefs I could have ever experienced, going from the chaos and the anxiety of the traffic and large schools, then you're hardly seen and you don't know people, to a very small community, a very small community, where you happen to know everybody on every corner. I joined the military when I was nineteen years old. I spent four years active duty. I am Saint of the Nile Japan. I've seen some very beautiful things. Nothing quite like Scottsville, but it's not just the surroundings of Scottsville that would be impacted that are that beautiful. It's the people. It's the vibe we have here. We're a small town, but there's some other things that I really wanna also bring to the table this evening on behalf of those people that are within that age range, who would love to get married, who would love to have kids. Our goal is honestly not to stay single and maybe have one children, child, and look for a place to live for a few years and move on and bounce around. Where I'm at right now, in my thirties, outside of my eleven years, with my now career, I would like to have a home where my children and my husband and I could grow and continue to stay here for a long time. Um, this is our amazing rare gem of a home. Those of us that call it home want to preserve our traditional small town feel, a place where people can gather and relax. You would be honoring a great river town if you continue to move the cars away, move them away from our bank lines and put them back in the city. You see, people who make up the history of a river town have a clear sense of their identity. Unfortunately, money doesn't drive us, not in the way that's being presented. Our identity and our determination is to make this a better place to live, where our roots continue to run deep. I hear change and I hear growth, which are all great things. I love the idea of this controlled growth. The unfortunate thing of where we're standing now is, it feels like we're just talking about the reactions and what all the impact is gonna be. Unfortunately, we spend a lot of time in the community and town, and we didn't get to hear anything that worked up to this. We didn't get to present any of those entrepreneurial innovative ideas. Instead, we're hearing something about putting a Band-Aid on a wound, because we need to bring people. We come to town from Buckingham, or come to town instead of going to Dillon, but our tavern has an hour-long wait. Food Lion, long wait, can't go through the BBT, I've heard. So I'm really unsure how this many people is going to be taken care of with what we have already. Um, if we dig into the identity as Scottsville, you will find the people in tradition is the old way of living. That's their identity. The deeps run, the roots run deep. The problem begins when towns in America start building communities for the cars instead of people, as if it's some, someone flipped the switch and stops building connected streets and started building fixed connected ones. It's an economic engine, as I call it. Building houses, filling them with appliances, building roads, grabbing cheap land and getting more money in the pocket. But research shows communities, it's easy to walk, ride bikes, gather, unite. They suffer less blessed oppression altogether. They have less of a footprint on the world, less crime, and we do have higher property value with a higher And we do have higher property value with a higher quality of living. We can't afford to build places where people can just park their bodies at night. We can't afford to spend a single dollar that doesn't increase land value rather than decrease it. I believe we should restore our town first and foremost. We wanna live in it and enjoy our community where we don't have to drive long distances. It's our goal to empty downtown. I believe this would be the end result of the radical change such as the apartment complex or the alternative facility, Amazon facility, et cetera. If Scottville wants to remain competitive and retain existing businesses, attract new ones. And have money in the treasury for parks and other amenities, then the best thing for us to focus on is improving what we already have here. You cannot build and expand on broken foundation. Our town needs to be walkable, livable, and enjoyable. We do not want our locals and communities to race through downtown in a hurry to escape the chaos. We want to linger in town, enjoy the businesses, and enjoy our amenities. Then before you know it, your children won't be moving off to other cities. Everything they want will be right here in our community. Everything up to now has only been practiced, but this is truly what matters. If it's based on provided jobs, a way to provide homes with needs, helps many families in many ways prior to. What would a co- apartment complex get back to our families versus what was there before? I understand as economic developers, we focus, the focus and goal is bringing businesses and industries to town. Retaining the businesses we have, expanding tax base. This can be difficult, I understand, without added housing. The issue has been long plagued in many of rural America. Construction is slowing, lumber prices continue to rise. I will tell you right now, where I live in my life with my other half, we split our rent. Would never, could never afford this apartment or choose to take our money and live in an enclosed cement. And call it some restored rural where we want to spend our money. Is this a housing crisis or a wake-up call for our small river town Scots, Virginia? We're at a pivotal point in our town's development with technological advances to be as mobile as a workforce. Work from home, create digital income through e-commerce. Our river town is on the verge of rebounding, but little places to live, I agree. But what I've heard sounds like very small-minded thinking, an easy fix or bandage on the wound, as I said. I understand as a community, we're no longer at a point where we get to talk about economic solutions. Someone here believes a solution that we already have. They have solutions. Stand in, we stand in your presence to remind you that we are and what we need. The impacts you may be causing, we now simply get to be reactive rather than proactive. Economic development requires building and supporting, strengthening small businesses, strengthening our arts and culture, getting our community involved. As I understand, we're here for the council to vote, approve or deny the rezoning and special uses. While we all have a proper for you town council, deny the rezoning, continue this out, and give us the opportunity to provide you with better solutions. Building has a history of intensive, hold on, let me pause here. The renovation plan is far from sound, bringing massive new debts and detrimental impacts. We learned the grants and promises to this proper are of little to no value. Mixed income affordability sounds great, but let record reflect, we have yet to see the evidence of value in that. We have a lot of older folk that were spoken of seventies, eighties, nineties. I'm not quite sure that the housing rate they would be able to afford. I believe here, the housing rate for them would be about twenty-five thousand yearly. I have one more point, and that is that we were also told. That those that can afford the rent, the affordable housing, those that can would just compensate. So there's also a lot of questions out there as to, is, will it truly be affordable? Who is going to be. Benefiting this affordable housing. From what I've heard, it's a very, very small portion of the people in our community.
Obviously, y'all are faced with a very difficult decision, and I don't envy you. I'm not opposed to growth in general, but based on what I've heard at the last meeting. This meeting, the research that I have done, I don't support the rezoning. And I refer to you to not approve that in this project going forward. I would say for following reasons for my opinion. First, I don't believe it's the right opportunity, nor is this the right time to do this. I yet to hear any clear articulation of benefit to the community. Our own fiscal impact study said there's no economic value in the project. That's coming in in terms of tax revenue. I hear a lot of things about potential opportunity and all for opportunity, but I'm all for realism. And the impacts we've heard on services in the town are going to be real. And we will have to find a way to pay for that. And I don't see those questions being answered. There was an EPA document on the planning board's site, essential smart growth fixes for rural planning. They had a whole rubric of how to do these projects and things that they recommend. I thought it was very well done, and I think we skipped a number of steps. They recommended, as Evan pointed out, an independent fiscal impact analysis. We have not done an independent analysis. And so I would go back to those documents, not just that one, but. There were three studies done. Arnette Maldrow and Associates did a study, market research study. The Waukesha Study that others have talked about, and the Small Area Plan. All of these have great ideas, some great visions. None of them mention anything over a hundred units. Two hundred is a lot. We are already putting thirty-six homes off of Bird Street. You average out three persons, let's say per home, hundred people. As opposed, that's about twenty percent of our population. That's a lot of growth already that developed. Now you put this on top of it, that's a lot for us to absorb, and we are not used to this rate of growth. Given that, the timing of this may not be right. I say that because. I don't know if you're familiar with Charles Maron. He has a whole movement and a number of books, blogs called Strong Towns. And he's a city planner and a civic engineer. He sees time and time again where people in communities like ours chase after growth to solve their problem. And mortgage their future in pursuit of this growth. Yes, two tenants and, in the interest of transparency, have not finished the book, which I have gotten sooner. But. One of the tenants is to make sure that growth is incremental. So that we can study the growth and what happens, what are the impacts, how we fund them. Learn lessons and then apply them to the next project. And the second thing is profitability. He talks about governments and saying that they should provide services. But he has a firm belief that they should be profitable and should cover their expenses. I'm not seeing where this project will cover the impacts of the effects that they will have. So again, I would not recommend that this project can be forwarded at this time. I think we should stop, take a look at what's going to be built, get some lessons learned, go back to those studies. Revision our future and then align for better opportunity today.
Anybody else? Alright.
Hey, I'm really good. I live at the very bottom of the county. I'm a person here at the beginning of the store in town. I do business. I know a lot of people say about businesses. Yes, I can tell you, I would personally like to see more people. Obviously, any business would. If you wouldn't, you shouldn't be in this. However, what the fire department had said, what you particularly had to say about it, that is a huge concern. To your points, one being, and I know I've spoken to you before this too. One being how this is gonna impact them. You have a volunteer fire department currently. They have to have lives as well. They have to work. They have to be able to work to provide for their own families and not just constantly give you servicing calls every five seconds. For, like you were saying, a remote, stuff to come to the couch and share. Trust me, that's easy to do, by the way. It's, that wouldn't be fair to them. I would definitely research this a little bit deeper into. Your vouchers, what that's truly gonna consist of. Go and talk to other places as a council as well. I would try to do that. And the other point that kind of concerns me, which honestly I did not know, so I'm sorry. They fall or fall out on the fields. But they're telling you right now, they currently are using the parking area back there as their overflow when they have more teams come in. That is part of Scottville. That's the community. You have kids playing ball. You have parents that are trying to support them. You might have friends who are trying to watch them. Where are they gonna be able to park? I can tell you right now, I know several of you know that I complain about parking on Valley Street or Main Street. Okay, obviously, the majority of people in here is finding parking's an issue. So whatever your vote is tonight, what I do urge you to do. Is to look up as your next move as the council in general and the town administrator over here, is to look up how can we. Potentially grow for parking so that we can invite more people in. Maybe that should be one of our next steps, is to grow. If we have, say, say the two hundred and five apartments gets through tonight, okay, I'll give you an example. If it gets through tonight. If you take some of those people who are gonna say, hey, you know what, I don't wanna, I don't wanna walk. I'll tell you right now, I'm not gonna be lying, I keep walking. Maybe I should, I always park this place so I can possibly park. Right? You have different people, some here walk, some people walk. The people who will not walk, if they choose to come downtown to any of the businesses, whether it's a brewery, whether it's restaurants, whether it's gift shops. Whatever it may be, and they decide, okay, we're gonna make a couple hours of it. We have the potential of how many cars coming downtown. Plus, you have the current people who come in frequent stores, the add that is currently without adding all these people. And then you add in, hey, it's a Saturday, a busy Saturday or Friday. Fridays can be fairly busy too. People who are going and say driving around to the line rates or just wanting to take a drive and get out of town. I have some people from Richmond, probably. We've had Virginia Beach. I've had out-of-state people who are just stopping by. We had one in North Carolina the other day. They are gonna be looking for parking as well, and if they cannot find it, they're not gonna stop. So if you guys wanna support your businesses. You need to figure out how do we solve parking as a whole, with or without this project. Okay, with any growth whatsoever, in order to support your town, in order for the town to make more money. In order for this to happen, you need to be able to provide space for people to come in. And as it sits right now. You're gonna have a really hard time going and providing that space if you instantly approve this without solving some of your other issues first. I mean, I'm sure several of you up here, if you go somewhere, you're like, holy crap, I'm gonna have to park all the way down there. And you have to walk several blocks. I know some of you will. You ride a bike, right? Yeah, okay, so some of you guys are on bikes, some of you walk. I've seen several of you walking. I've seen you riding a bike. I don't know if you're a bike or walk. I'm not sure.
Bike or walk, Dan, what is it?
I know Matt, you have a bike. City bike a lot of places, but it's help. However. We need to keep it to where businesses can continue to have multiple people coming in and not just every available space taken up. Birthday, two hours, three hours of the day, they go see several shops, they might stop to eat lunch. That takes a couple hours. As far as the baseball, clearly, we need to look at it as a town to support like kids' recreations. I don't know whether or not the field is considered part of, I'm assuming, person rep or some little town property. But maybe looking at additional parking for when other areas come in to play ball. So there are some things to seriously consider. I can tell you, the line for anybody who's talking about the line in the bank right now. The bank, I don't know what issue there. As far as the line, I can tell you right now, because I just talked to some people, they're cutting people's hours. They're literally cutting people's hours despite the long freaking lines when you walk in there. You may have three registered open. At one point, it's telling you, hey, you think that people work, now they're cutting hours. Go ask any of the employees, ask three. So that's what I would seriously consider. Don't think there's just a number of issues that we are.
How y'all doing?
Alright.
And for you, made and saved my life. More dinners out of that stretch that you can see. But anyway, one of my first questions is, Dr. Hurt on that bill. He has more money than about any person that you wanna know. He built and made Crozet. Why in the world, if he didn't think it was a good investment, would he sell it off to them? Why, why would he not want his name? He bought loan notes up here. He's a town man. Why in the world would he wanna take his money and invest in other guys? And, and I'm not against growth. I mean, I like growth. I wanna meet new people. I wanna teach new people things. I'd love to teach fun people to run fish and all that, but I don't want it to be a muscle load of immigrants. And, and, and how many people drive Yardsfield and just wanna go crazy? And I'm so relieved when they see this strip of Scottville. It's home. I had a pile of family retire for years ago. My dad still has trucks with tires on it in the yard. That part's not bad, but the, I just. If you turn on the news, you watch your government, you watch your president. You think, what in the world kind of world, what are we living in? Why would us as a town and a community wanna give to that? Let, let's grow what we have here, who we have here, before we bring a bunch of other people in. These are some of the smartest, wisest, long-lived, teach you how to live, pretty, hard-working people you ever wanna meet in Scottville. You can go anywhere in the world. I ain't been in many places, but you, you know, I mean, it, it's great. And I just don't think that it's, and, and if it's a good deal, they ain't going nowhere. I promise you. They said they're here for ten years, so if y'all turn it down, they'll come up with a better revised plan. Or they'll go on to the next community and pawn their money off on them. I just, I, I, I don't like. Just be wise. I don't know how many of y'all are from Scottville and know this town or where it was built on. Who it was built on and, and. I just, I, I don't think those types of people. And the traffic's not bad. I mean, everybody just needs to learn to drive, put the phone down, stop when you make up. Slow down a little bit, focus on where you're going. But, I mean, it is true, it's not gonna work. And the baseball, that man taught us a pile of baseball, played a pile of games. And I don't want my kids to look up there and see electric bike and twenty-five cars. We seen deer, turkeys, birds. And thank y'all for passing the urban archery. That was nice. But, you know, it, it just. I don't know, just be smart, be wise. And I know y'all are, y'all are, everybody is. I just, and not that I don't trust them, but Dr. Hurt is a smart, wise man. And he's a money man, he's a businessman, but I don't know why he, I don't know how long he's owned it. I wish it did. I don't know why he wouldn't have done something with it on his own terms. With what he done in Crozet. And Crozet is a beautiful place. But people don't look at you when you walk through the store. They don't wave at you. They don't nod at you. They don't ask you how you did. They don't know their neighbors. Who in the hell wants to live like you? They don't know their neighbors, who in the hell wants to live like that? I mean. This Santa Faria tale, this is Scottville, we, we live in a lucky place, the whole shoe is there, I mean, that's it. It's one of a kind, and I just pray we can keep it though.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Thanks, Barbara Lo, I'm here as a citizen. We live on Main Street, East Main Street in Scottville, my family's been here for a while. We're not anti workers. And what's been proposed here is not responsible growth, because it's a high density piece. It's a high density piece in a town that's not built for that, it's not resourced for that, it's not serviced for that. And I'm going to give you numbers, no one here is really talking about a lot of numbers, just quickly, I appreciate that. But numbers, and all the numbers I'm gonna bring you are documented by Mr. Lo and the staff. The mayor indicated he's not familiar with or up to date with or has committed to memory the numbers. Of what the unit mixing rental rates are, but I suggest and propose and submit to you that if you're going to vote, you want to know the numbers. Here, the numbers are, there's hundred and thirty-nine multi units. And there are, that's one thirty-two bedrooms, nine three bedrooms, fifty-six one bedrooms, one studio. If you do a conservative estimate of two people per bedroom, it's six hundred eighty-eight people. If you do one, it's still three hundred ninety-three people. Forty-two, only forty-two of the units, according to the other sheet in the lawless report, are gonna be affordable housing. Everybody keeps saying, we're doing this to help the community, we're doing this to have affordable housing, only forty-two of those are affordable housing. And they talked about that the affordable housing amount should be a one thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars rent. Now, according to the unit mix chart, the affordable housing, the highest is fourteen, the three bedroom. Has, has fourteen hundred fifty-two dollars worth of rent, the lowest is one thousand eight dollars worth of rent. No fifty dollar an hour, people are paying at fifteen dollars an hour, at, uh, forty hours of return, fifty-two is thirty-one thousand dollars. That's not people paying that kinda rent. So let's take that right out of the picture, but let's talk about what it is doing and what the numbers tell us. This is not a we will build it and they will come situation. If you're gonna vote for this, you have to know we've got this stuff in the bag, we need to know we have the resources. Police, the fire, the schools, the water, and the things we need. The proposal or the suggestion that Alamo County's gotta come up with the tax money. Why would they give it to us? Right now, the number according to the lawless report is thirty-four hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars worth of, of tax. Base off of that, even on, under the lawless report, if there's ten percent real estate tax levy, and I suggest you do that with coming back. With the ten percent tax levy will give the town about fifty, that's assuming a fifty thousand, I'm sorry, five hundred thousand off of, five hundred thousand, correct. The fifty million gets a five hundred thousand, we get the amount of about, if the ten, ten percent comes, we get about fifty-nine thousand. It solves our current budget. Issue, there's our current budget issue, and I suggest you this as part of what this is, this is to suggest to solve our current budget issue. Because we are fifty-nine thousand dollars in the hole once the emergency buzzer removed in twenty twenty-four. But what we haven't done is taken account of what this is gonna cost us, not just in numbers, not just in money, but let's talk about money for a minute. Um, the lawless report says that the things we're not legally responsible for in the recall, though he recommends it to you in staff reporting. Fire, we're not legally responsible for that, schools, we're not legally responsible for that, water, we're not legally responsible for that. But should you build a place at the fire, should you permit them to build a place by getting this vote, and if you vote, you're committing them to build. A place that we can't service with fire, we've heard from some of the fire people this time, we heard from them last time. And even the, the chief pocket, he's not from Scottville, he says we need one tower, four engines, a command vehicle. And, um, an ambulance, we don't have that, he says we're well positioned for initial response, yeah, they're positioned to show up. We gotta wait for everybody else to get here, with two hundred units, and you have to evacuate those people? You can't build if you can't get the people out, you have to build for worst case scenario, you can't just go unless hope doesn't happen. Oh, means. Two hundred apartments, and I'm not talking about whoever's moving. You're gonna have. Property crimes, death crimes, trespass crimes, it's not just the people who live here, people are gonna come here. And suggested just because our speeders are from out of town, because they're the only ones who know where the speed traps are. Suggest that our criminals aren't from here. They're from everywhere. You have multiple, most of the police calls are to help on emergency calls for help. Call the she, police have to go, for domestic violence and people, it comes across all blocks of life. It's not just the low income housing, it's all people, you have domestic violence calls. You have trespass because some people live there and some people don't want people there, people are gonna come, they've got a hundred cars in the parking lot. These are people are gonna tell each other, uh, car stereos and other things like that. You have DUIs because people who live with my friend, they might drive away. You have just the need for the climate calls that were mentioned with sort of sort of flip it fire calls where there's somebody lost. People call nine-one-one for the measure of details things, but two hundred apartments with six hundred eighty-eight people. The, the study says it will not make any impact on our police. That is a fallacy, you can't have six hundred eighty-eight people in high density housing and not. In, increase the police coverage, part-time, day shift police, and I love them, and I thank them. Can't service this kind of number, you have to have them at night, you have to have them twenty-four hours a day, you have to have additional people. Now, let's talk about numbers, if we only get the ten percent increase in meals taxes for the fifty-four some thousand that mentioned in the review. Fifty-four thousand, thank you, fifty-four thousand, that is in the, um, ten percent real estate taxes. We get that, and we don't get anything from the county, we've ate up more than the cost of one police officer, one police officer costs a lot more than fifty-four thousand dollars. Last thing, schools. The study talks about, we don't, we have enough seats, they talk about our ranking in the overall, uh, number of. Development in, in our county, that's not the issue, they've got. Two hundred eighty-five seats available in the brand new expansion we got, we've already got two hundred seven filled, we've got seventy-eight seats left. You're telling me that, um, hundred thirty-nine multi unit is gonna not fill up seventy-eight seats? Are you telling me that even if you just take the forty-two low income housing, low income housing should be giving children homes? Are they only gonna have forty-two, maybe they'll have twice that, that's eighty-four, you'd eat up the seats, even if you have forty-two, that's not talking about the others thirty-nine houses. You already approved it, how many kids might live there, or not one more child in anywhere else beats Scottville Peter County. So you can't talk about schools. The numbers don't add up, last number and I'm done. The study said. One car every sixteen seconds, you might get the money for everything else, but how do you solve that? One car every sixteen seconds coming on the birth rate, that's car. Car.
You didn't wait sixteen seconds, bro.
Car.
Okay, that's. Major point.
If it's approved, it doesn't stop, it goes all day, all the time, that's what you're really, the change in town with that kind of impact. Don't build it and hope it'll come, plan for it to come, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, before I start, I'm walking down. Been here a couple decades, but, uh, I wanna thank each and every one of y'all for the community and Alexis representatives. Thank you people who've come up here, prepared a bunch of our daily homework, daily management work at the time. But, uh, I'm just gonna, uh, speak from. What I've been told. For those of you who do not know, I'm the administrator, but God's gonna give you a big opinion. I've had a lot of people reach out to me, they've done, they've reached out to me, questions, and, you know, one of the biggest things is. Is they don't have the entire information out there. And this is small town. And it's easy for somebody to get one plus one and equal five, it happened all the time. So I'm here to go ahead and introduce some of the things out there, you know, been told to me by people in Scottville. They're scared that towns got them jumping to something that we can't get out of. They do not want Alamo County to take over Scottville. There are people, uh, you know, it's hard to fight department guys. Fire department is responsible for, I say to you, police department is responsible for, I say to you, but also the fire department. There's behind our parade and the Fourth of July, which is possibly the biggest fun money maker we have. People don't want that to go. And people have also said that, you know, we moved to Scottville, why? Small, quiet town, get away from the big two, big metropolitan area. Now, I know y'all are not trying to turn this into a big city, two hundred units is a lot. But I would tell you, I, I am fourth rated. I mean, change and grace is inevitable, it's gonna happen. But I'm a firm believer that if we're gonna do this, we need to take our time, step in the shallow water, walk out in the deep, don't jump into the deep end. And so, I'm not here to fuss and shout, yes, y'all are elected official. You know, and y'all do have a decision to find y'all. Now that, but every action does the opposite reaction. So what if y'all do decide? It could go good, you're gonna have people gonna pat you on the back and say, thank you, you're gonna have people be mad, they're gonna be upset. They may get mad and move out of the area, who knows? But. The decisions that have been made tonight are not really for. People's sense of myself. If our kids. The kids, the people who are twenty, twenty-five years old, I mean, some of the people in this room, if you're older than I am, we won't be here in twenty years. Now, this project will happen tomorrow, I know, it's gonna take about three to five years to get it. Get on, on board with it. And another thing is. Even though I, I know that growth is possible, it's gonna happen. Would I have to account for them, I know y'all trying to do what the best for us, but. I feel that we should invest all our resources and try to work with what I call our storefronts, valleys, free main street. We have so many empty buildings there. Build those up, reach out to the property owners, give them some type of, encourage them to use the upper part of the building to turn into lots. You wanna bring people in, start small. Don't play it a huge jacket, darn almost. Same way, here, and, so you know, if we can, if we can fix that street gate. Fill up the buildings on the storefronts and stuff, we'll bring people in. And another thing we really need to look at is, since I've been here, I've seen a lot of restaurants come and go. We gotta find out why is it small business cannot stay for function for a while in Scottville. We've been told the, uh, two of the longest businesses we have here that are not held in, they both got alcohol license. Would they still be here if they did not have an alcohol license, who knows, I can't answer that. But challenges are reached out, we need to work with the small business owners, we need to work with the property owners, and we need to build a storefront. We get that done, and hey, you know what, just open up the possibility to thirty-six thousand or two hundred and five apartment, or whatever kind y'all have to call that town. So you know, I just, uh. I pray that y'all make the right decision and just remember. What you do tonight is not really gonna affect us, it's gonna affect our kids and future generations.
Hello. Since Walter said something about kids, then I have children, I'm on it, so. Um, so my name is Cory Malander, and, um, I have lived in the town. And, um, never more than three miles outside the town my whole thirty-seven years. Uh, I have two children, and they both attend Scottville Elementary. Which is a wonderful school, um, that's also where I attended, I then went to Walton and then Monticello, so this is where I'm from. As well as my ninety-seven year old aunt, who my mom came up and spoke about. Um, and so my family is, we've got big roots here. So I just wanna speak about, um, this evening, uh, my daughter, um, has, goes to the library twice a week. And I went to take her to the library today, and there was no parking at the library. Um, at, uh, four thirty on a today's. Tuesday, thank you, on a Tuesday afternoon, there was absolutely no parking. Um, and I, this is concerning. Um, just even with not even thinking about something else coming right down the road from there. There was some parking at our beautiful library that we love, uh, it's a quiet library, it's wonderful, you all should visit it, everyone in here. Um, you go in, you know the librarian, it's quaint and wonderful. What concerns me is bringing two hundred apartments right beside the library. What that will do to even that, no one spoke about that either, um, I'll speak a little bit about the schools, um. I'm not sure what year, because with COVID, my kids' education's kind of been, you know, all over the place. But Nancy voiced, uh, recently, several years ago, and that added. That actually increased, increased our Scottville school by about a third. Um, so after we were, these in those classes, we had terrible trailers out back where my children were learning. They then put an expansion on, it's beautiful, wonderful expansion, um, but it's not. Big enough for all of the growth that we're talking about, because I know you all are voting on the two hundred apartments tonight. But that doesn't include also what's coming in Paulette Town down the road, and also what's already been approved. I choose to send my children to Scottville School because it is a small school. And everyone knows everyone, the teachers are wonderful, the class sizes are small. What I don't want to see happen is to add. All of, a ton of children and class sizes go up, we are so lucky. Right here in this area to have a small class size, um, there are two grades or two classes per grade. Um, which means that the classes are all able, the grades are all able to get together at least once a day and have a community. If you add three or four classes per grade, that loses that, go to Fluvana, see what's happening there. It loses that small feel, um, my daughter will be going to middle school next year. Um, and my son still has seven years in Scottville, which I'm excited about because he loves Scottville School. Um, I also am a, um, daughter of a volunteer firefighter. Um, and they love, we, we love them, and we love, he loves running calls. Um, and I think that the emotion that's coming from there, no one really hears. The county is separate from the volunteers, and I don't know if everyone in here understands that. So the county has a paid rescue ambulance service. So if you have a heart attack, you call nine-one-one and the county will come. You also have supplemental fire department that also will come, they have full-time jobs, they, they're better than we are, they come. But the paid ambulance service cannot get to those falls. So if you add two hundred apartments, the response time, I know that they spoke about it last time. I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but if your child is choking, seconds matter. If your mom is having a heart attack, seconds matter, and when the closest ambulance, medic ambulance is at least twenty minutes away. That's hard to swallow, and that's already a problem we're experiencing at this moment. This is not something we're talking about if the two hundred come, that's something that's happening right now. And that's something everyone in this room should be concerned about. And so I just want that to be considered, you all have a tremendously, uh, difficult decision. And I know that there's a lot of emotions, um, but when I think of my kids, they play ball in Scottville. Um, and they go to Scottville School, and they just had a huge growth in their school with Nancy closing. Um, so when I think of another growth in Scottville School, um, it just, it frightens me. To be honest, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Everybody else? Okay, let's go with the online people.
Okay, let's go with the online people.
You want us? I'm Stuart Hudson, uh, P ten Jackson Street. Tonight y'all are being given a choice. Um, Mr. Anderson has stated that he has definite plans uh, for to put either a apartments in or the Scottsville Industrial Park, which you can see on the web right now. Um, there isn't a third choice at this point. I would love to see slower growth, but at that, at this point, that's not an option with what we can do with that site. We either get an industrial park or we get apartments. So first of all, let's be clear about our choices. As it is currently being advertised on the web, the Scottsville Industrial Park will be an equipment and material storage facility where at least thirty contractors will drive trucks in in the morning, pick up materials and equipment, drive them to their work site and return in the evening to drop that equipment back off. Uh, Mr. Anderson is already fielding inquiries from companies that wanna store their construction equipment, dump trucks, moving and landscaping equipment at the industrial park. Thus, the Scottsville Industrial Park will create significant truck traffic in the morning and evening down to Bird Street, which has no sidewalk and will not yet. For the time, last ten years since I lived here, um, I've heard horror stories about the truck factory from residents. I don't understand why anyone on council would wanna vote for them to turn, to return that truck traffic to downtown Scottsville now that you've gotten rid of it. The Scottsville Industrial Park likely will only create a few new jobs. It's primar- primarily a storage facility with little office space. And so it's not going to attract companies with a lot of employees. Res zoning to allow apartments is the only alternative to Scottsville Industrial Park. Undeniably, apartments will change the town. Car traffic will increase on Bird Street. However, the town will at least get assistance building a sidewalk down Bird Street that will make it safe to walk to and pass our library and our ballroom. We will not get help building a sidewalk from the Scottsville Industrial Park. And its opening will make Bird Street a more dangerous place for pedestrians. I know I'm wrong there. Uh, more houses are coming to Scottsville, but they're all going to be expensive single-family houses. We tried to find a way to get some affordable housing on the border, on Bird Street as part of the special use permit, but we couldn't figure out a way. All future houses will also be expensive because builders make the most money on. They will not build more apartments. Builders do not as much money building apartments as they do building expensive single-family homes. So why should they build apartments? Res zoning the factory to residential is the only way that Scottsville's gonna get anything like affordable rental housing in the future. Exelon is offering a legal guarantee of reduced rents. They may not be as low as we would like, but it's a legal guarantee that at least we get some. Current rates are increasing in Scottsville and they're gonna continue to reduce so. The iron law of economics is that when there are fewer things, you're gonna pay more for them. Scottsville rents are increasing right now because, because there are a few rental units and more people want to rent. Some existing renting units are being converted into the airbnbs and there are no plans to build any more apartments anywhere near here in the future. With no apartments and more people wanting to live in Scottsville, landlords can easily find people who will pay higher rents. With no more rental units, units coming and more people wanting existing apartments, landlords are gonna continue to raise our rents. The fewer the apartments, the more the landlords can rent it for. Without additional rental units and some kind of rent control, Scottsville is going to quickly become a town where only rich people can afford to live. Please don't let this happen to our town. Councilors, the choice is yours. We vote, we vote to rezonate the factory to residential and give us apartments, or vote against rezoning and get the Scottsville Industrial Park. A vote for rezoning will give the town um, where at least some rent-controlled, some rent-controlled apartments. A vote against rezoning gives us the Scottsville Industrial Park, increasing a town, increasing, increasingly a town where only rich people can live. A vote for rezoning is a vote for improving our community services. Increasing the town population is the only way we're gonna get some of these better medical and emergency search, services that we can talk about. The county and health systems only provide services where there are enough people to use them. If we don't have the services that we would like, we, we do not have the services that we'd like to have because we don't have enough people to use them. Increasingly, increasing our population will help bring more county and better medical services to town. A Scottsville Industrial Park will not. A vote for rezoning is a vote against the return of trucks blocking Valley and Bird Street. Please don't bring them back. And a vote for rezoning is a vote for a sidewalk down Bird Street to help keep our pedestrians safe. A vote against rezoning is a vote for no sidewalk. So you're voting on a, on a, a choice between apartments or an industrial park. I encourage you to vote for apartments and provide, that will provide at least some affordable rental units. Improve our medical and, and, uh, emergency services and keep truck traffic out of Scottsville. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your, thank you for your time considering this. This is a really tough decision and, uh, and, uh, I appreciate your service and consideration.
Thanks, sir.
Hello, good evening. Don Lo, long time, ready to go back a big generation. My people are farmers, like simple, hardworking people. Nonprofit on Main Street and wrote a couple over four and five weeks. That's what I currently do. I'm also retired from Canada for my own time. Uh, just to make a couple of points here, real quick. The original cop plan stated mix of use commercial, provide jobs, sales tax to come to us, plus businesses. Services for us. Uh, this is not a binary choice. It's not apartments or industry. As far as I know, my understanding is this exelon is not on the building. Um, I don't see in all the years I've been here, it's plant shutdown, if anybody's been beaten down the street to, to, to develop this property. Um, especially with the high interest rates we have today. This is not a solution for Scottsville. I say let's, uh, you know, for the votes, yeah, everybody, so people. I just like, you know, you guys got a tough job on, understand that. Uh, I just hope you, you know, like they always say, you don't measure, measure twice.
Anyone else? One wants?
Online, online.
Oh, you still have some people online? I figured they may have dropped off by now.
Um, Mr. Mr. Donald's the first to sign up for this.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're good. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, City Council and, um, and my neighbors that gather there kinda sounds like, um, this thing's heading in the down direction. And I just wanted to speak, I, I attended the planning. Just to back up, I live up Glenham Road at Whitehall Farms and Vineyards and uh, my wife and I this year bought three buildings on Valley Street that were renovating to historic standards and we're investing a lot. Here, we're active volunteering around town and, and supporting the nonprofits. Care about the town and just wanna point out, I don't think anyone has really thought about this from the perspective of saving the town. Because this town is in a dire situation that is not being discussed. Which is this, the budget of the town is about a million dollars. And the revenue collected from the town is four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. The last few years, we've been in a pretty cush situation in that the American Rescue Act through federal and state dollars provided the other five-hundred thousand. Uh, you may know that the town's budget ends in June. It's not a generated December, it's uh, it's a mid-year budget. So this June is the end of our of our budget term. And at that point in time, the American Rescue Act has actually run out. And so we have about a million-dollar budget of what it costs to operate this town. And now you have coming in five-hundred thousand. So in June, there's an immediate shortfall of around half a million dollars. And, um, so I think the, you know, you have to kind of, if you're making a decision, I think, you know, in a family context, it's helpful to know like, hey, what, what are our choices? And Scottsville really doesn't have the, the money to make much of a choice here. Uh, it really needs the financial injection that this development offers. And if you look at what it takes to run the town, so, so in June, again, you're down to five-hundred thousand dollars of tax revenue coming in. So what does it take to run the town? Well, the administration of the town is around two, is around, what, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand? And the police station is around two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So it costs about a half million to kinda keep the lights on. And that's before you've done anything else. And I really am mystified at how this hasn't been discussed. Because basically, five months from today, the town is on a financial cliff. And so then the question is, how long can it hold on if it doesn't do this, if it does nothing? And the answer is not very long. Um, the, I think you could probably reduce the expenses of the town from a million dollars to around seven-hundred and seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand and still get by. But, you know, you have a deficit there of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So if you're gonna say, okay, we, we either gonna do two things, we're either gonna raise taxes, which is very difficult because there's not much commerce and there's not that many people to tax, right? So that becomes, even if you wanted to raise taxes, raising and collecting the taxes becomes a very difficult situation. You can't, for example, really get property taxes because the cost of administering a property tax would cost you so much to assess the properties and collect the taxes than you'd actually collect. Um, and so then you look at your emergency funds, because this is a financial emergency that the town's gonna come to. And the good news is there's emergency funds there of about a little over four-hundred thousand. And if you used every dime, that means the town goes out of business in December of twenty-twenty-four. And that's when it has to turn over the keys. Now, it could be off by, you could stretch it maybe three months in the other direction by doing some various things. But basically, the town will kinda fold and the county will probably take over. Unless the ta- town, you know, finds out a ways to raise taxes. Now, interesting enough, whether you like or don't like this proposal, it brings tax revenue to the town. And the way that I really makes money, the biggest chunk the town makes is from our restaurants. It's a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. That's the biggest portion of the four-hundred-and-ninety thousand. The town actually collects on its self and can expect in the future. So, uh, when you add more people here, you know, we get people from all over the area, but you actually need a base to have a few more restaurants. So if you had like two thriving restaurants more on top of what we have, and then you're building the gas, you know, the market up the street, you'd start to patch these holes along with the three-hundred thousand dollars that we would get from the county from approving this. The eighty thousand dollars from the business license, the contractor have to pay to do business license here. Yeah. For themselves to park in Scottsville, which I know is being discussed. The eyes about to happen here, which is the town's about to go out of business. And I think that uh, it's not whether you want to vote for this, it's whether the town can afford not to.
Thank you. Who we got next?
Is that me?
Mr. Unsworth.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything Dan Baum just said there, and I would just like to add to it very quickly that, um, if we don't pass this, when we run into that inevitability and you all realize that you have no choice but to pass a, a real estate tax, I would remind you that the amount you'll tax our current residents will then have to be higher, uh, than it would otherwise should we grow the tax base so dramatically by, uh, approving this development. But I don't really wanna get into all of that. Uh, I'm thinking of something different as I've been sitting here looking out my window. Uh, I should have introduced myself, I'm sorry. I'm Thomas Unsworth. I live at two-seventy-five Bird Street. I've lived here for about the last ten years. Right across the street from, uh, Piedmont Housing Alliance Development at the Old Scottsville, uh, school apartments. And when I was lucky enough to be our town clerk, uh, one thing that I stumbled across, uh, at some point or another, were the minutes from the meeting uh, just like this, where they were discussion, discussing whether or not to approve that development. And a lot of the same sorts of things about the types of people who this would attract to our community and the way that it would ruin our character and you know, the shame about the building and the traffic and all of that were brought up. And I would just remind everyone that that is now a place where our grandmothers and grandfathers and great-aunts and uncles have chosen to go to retire. That is a part of this community that we have embraced fully, that, you know, when their servicing was pulled by Almarle County, I saw this town council jump to their defense, uh, as nothing short of, you know, uh, an equal part of this community. And I think that was an opportunity then for town council to, uh, show their good character and make an, an intelligent decision for not just the future of this town, but for its most vulnerable residents at the time. And I think you have another opportunity in front of you here tonight. Uh, as has been said over and over, there is a great deal of affordability baked into this. And I've heard people say, well, you know, that's too much money for somebody on fifteen dollars an hour to pay for an apartment if they're trying to raise a family. And I would just respond to that by reminding you what I said at our last, uh, public hearing about this, which is that all of those affordable apartments will qualify for housing vouchers from Almarle County. Housing vouchers that residents in the Scottsville area currently forfeit every year because they're unable to find housing that can accept it. This fills that hole. This fixes that problem, will allow more people who need affordable housing, truly affordable, you know, to, to be able to find it. And to this town's future, you know, I'm raising two kids here. Uh, I, I hope that they, uh, see this town as a place that has a future for them and somewhere that they would want to stay. But I look around now and I wonder where that would be if they wanna move back here. Um, we need inventory in order for this town to grow. Uh, and I know that that's just fundamentally simple, but it feels like it's, it's worth repeating. Uh, and to the last point, you know, I, my front door is twenty feet away from this street and I am a hundred times more concerned about the impact of this business, this industrial park. Uh, and the truck traffic that it will bring, that I have heard horror stories about for the ten years I've lived here from all of my neighbors, you included, Mr. Heisen. And I do not understand how you all would give up after five years of planning your voice in this process and let this revert to that kind of buy-right use. And I would encourage you, whatever decision you make tonight, to think, to remember that it's not just about the decision you make, it's about how you make this decision. You have a lot of these important decisions in front of you as a, we do as a community. And pulling the rug out from under a developer this far into a planning process is going to severely impact the willingness of other people to come forward and work with you in the future. What you're doing is incredibly public. And Eddie, that fit that you threw last week or last month, after you sat down with me two days before and said you were gonna come into that meeting with an open mind, ready to hear what the, you know, will of the people was, what the public speakers wanted to hear. And the first words out of your mouth were screaming in rage that you weren't gonna be able to vote that down then and there. And it's that kind of behavior from this body that is going to cost us our ability to participate in this process in the future. And I hear a lot of people worrying about what's gonna go end up at Paulette Town. You're not gonna get a say. They're just gonna do the buy right suburban sprawl that everybody hates, that's just gonna put more cars on our road. Not something, you know, that, this is, yes, it's density, but it's in our downtown where density is supposed to be. Yes, it's gonna put cars on the road, but it's also gonna put pedestrians on the road. It's gonna let people walk, you know, we are talking about forfeiting our growth to let it happen in the surrounding counties because we're too scared to take a step forward. Well, the counties are gonna grow around us and then we're gonna say, well, we don't have room to. But all of the benefit then has been taken. You know, we, we are going to give up our ability to do this. Anyway, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Unsworth.
Thanks. Take care.
Hello, Ms. Greer.
Hi. I'll be very brief because I know everybody has probably heard enough. Um, but I mean, I, I'm very much in, in favor of this, even though I, I understand it might be unpopular. And I think the, the reasons why are that um, this would solve the two huge problems that the town has. Um, one, the, the town, I mean, I guess people don't like to think about it, but the fact is the town's going broke, right? And so I think, you know, I think it seems easy to vote this down because it's, you know, people don't like change and, and stuff. But I think people really don't like getting their taxes raised. Um, which would be the logical outcome of voting this down. So I think, you know, vote this down, then you're voting to raise taxes. And uh, I think that would just be terrible because it would really diminish all the property values in Scottsville if there's a, a, an added real estate tax on all the properties. Because then people are like, well, why would I buy a property in Scottsville? When, you know, I could buy a property in Almarle County that doesn't have a, a Scottsville tax and an Almarle County tax. So I think it's just really diminishing the value of everybody in Scottsville's house. Um, to be in a situation where the town is going broke and has to raise revenue that way. Um, so I think that's a problem. And uh, and then I think the other problem is, you know, the businesses on Valley Street are really struggling and Scottsville's been losing population and losing population and losing population. And you drive through these small towns all over Virginia and they're basically like ghost towns of like falling down buildings. And I think that this is an opportunity to stem all the vacancy. Uh, because suddenly there would be new people who, um, and granted, I'm sure some of them will be annoying and some of them will vote ways you don't like and, you know, whatever, but uh, there'll be new people who can patronize the businesses. And I know the businesses, a lot of them really, they're really struggling because there just aren't enough people to buy stuff. Uh, it's just really simple. You can't, you can't solve the vacancy, all the vacant buildings if the existing businesses can't even make a go of it because there aren't enough people to patronize them. And um, and then I think there's the other issue of, you know, Scottsville goes broke. So what happens? I guess one, option one is you just raise the taxes on everybody, which I think is a real bummer. I don't like paying tons of taxes. I don't think anybody else does either. Um, or you dissolve into the unwieldy bureaucratic behemoth that is Almarle County. And I don't know, I get the sense that I don't like big government behemoths. And I, I don't think that people of Scottsville really do either. Um, so I think it would be really a bummer to, instead of having our cute little friendly town government for the town to go broke and become part of Almarle County. So I just think there, you know, I think it, there aren't any, it's not that there, I, I think that um, you know, I think it's a, a difficult conundrum, but I, I think there has to be some realism about the fact that I think that if you examine the actual town budget, it's like, whoa, very, very scary thing is headed our way.
Okay, that, that it, Ms. Greer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for joining us. Good evening. Floor is yours.
Me?
Yes, sir.
So uh, you've heard a lot of different perspectives, you know, from all, all different type of age of people, people that have lived there, people that have moved there, people that were raised. So I'm a whole different perspective. I don't live in Scottsville. I am moving to Scottsville. Um, and I am in your young target demographic. I'm a millennial. My wife is in her twenties and we have a two-month-old baby, you know, and so we chose Scottsville for a reason, just the same reason that all of you live here, uh, whether you were born in it or not. But, you know, Scottsville has an allure, an allure and a charm that, you know, we're all fighting for. And that's, that's kind of what uh, I've learned as an, as watching all of this and, and learning and trying to soak up as much as I can. Everybody is fighting to try to save what they want and create the Scottsville that they want going forward. Um, which is commendable and, you know, that's why we are a community. That's why, that's what makes America great. That's what makes small towns, small towns great. So, but um, the, the thing that's missing that, that I think uh, hopefully my perspective can bring is I'm moving from Augusta County and you know, I don't live in a big city over here. I live very close to Stanton, Waynesboro, Harrisonburg. I work in Charlottesville. My wife works in Charlottesville. That's why Scottsville made sense for us. But uh, you gotta understand, Scottsville is a tiny town. And I know that there's been comments made about the rural ring and all of that. Like I said, I'm soaking them up. I know the lingo. But uh, you know, the, the actual town is tiny. And Echelon Resources, you know, I, I did peruse their website and I saw some of their other uh, projects. They're, they're all in larger towns, towns like Winchester, South Boston, Warrenton. You know, that have good infrastructure in place already, even if the buildings that they're rehabbing or rehabilitating are, you know, need help and need brought back up, which I love that concept from Echelon. But I don't think that it fits in Scottsville because of the fact that you have a tiny twisty two-lane twen- Route twenty, there's a bunch of Ts in there, that goes in and out of Scottsville. I mean, you're, you are, you're talking about potentially four hundred to six hundred people. Every, most people will have a car, two-person. So you're talking at, at a minimum, three hundred to four hundred cars coming up and down that tiny Bird Street or potentially going up Harrison to Warren. You know, if, if there's a big traffic jam and they can't get out on the road on twenty. I mean, you, you, just that fact alone, the traffic influx of just cars and people is crazy to think about. This is not Croze where you have two fifty running through and sixty-four right there. You know, this is not Warrenton. This is not, you're talking about a tiny place. And I'm just looking at it from an outsider, looking at the logistics of how, how am I gonna get to work? Am I gonna, you know? And I don't have to do that turn on Bird Street. But I would hate to do it. So a, a lot of people have said a lot of things that are really, I've learned about the utilities and the fire and the response and all of that. And I think that the answer here is not to plop down people and expect everything else to catch up. Because you are plopping down four hundred to six hundred people. And you're expecting everything else to, the wheels to start spinning and everything to catch up. Uh, to me, that's the wrong way to go about it. And that's what kind of frustrates me. As I was listening to this and especially with Mr. Baum's comments, it, it kind of uh, got me a little frustrated because it, it reveals what the real crux of this issue is. It's like the guy said with the glasses early on, he said that it's been a lack of planning on, on this council. And then also obviously the, the ones prior to y'all, you know, to, to not plan for growth and organic growth. And now what was revealed with the fact that now y'all are gonna be insolvent in um, y'all can be insolvent in December of twenty-four. Now your backs are against the wall. So now it makes sense why you are pushing so hard for this influx of four hundred to six hundred taxpayers at the expense of everybody else in Scottsville. And that's what really bothers me as somebody who I was attracted by the charm and all the stuff that we all love in Scottsville. And so it, it leads me, I've, I've always made this point uh, when I've talked about this. As an outsider looking in, this, this poorly planned inadequate and rushed proposal and the council's recommendations with it comes across in only two ways. The council is either naive or ignorant about the issues surrounding this pro- proposal, or they're complicit. And I don't want to believe that you're complicit, but Mr. Baum's statements and the fact that now you're ba- I understand that your backs are up against the wall when it comes to a tax issue and insolvency as a government. It's, it's, it's infuriating to me. So the, the, the bottom line is that the, if you are just naive and ignorant about some of the issues that are going to come along with the influx of about four hundred to six hundred people and their cars and their crime and their waste and their emergencies and their police calls. If you're ignorant and naive about that, the developers are not. Southern Development, they understand exactly how much they stand to benefit. And then they close the door and they walk away. And the town of Scottsville, me, my family, my child who's gonna grow up in the town of Scottsville is left holding the keys to that. So that's, that's all I have to say is you want to talk about the future, you want to talk about all this, this is a rushed proposal that I think it's gonna, you know, my family that is moving there and my child and my, my future children are gonna be left dealing with the, with the, with the fallout from this. So but yeah, so at the end of the day though, I do, I do appreciate because, I mean, y'all are trying to do, I, I really, I've gotten to meet some of you people and I, I love the, the, the heart of Scottsville because it's, everybody's trying to do the right thing here, right? At the end of the day, we, we're trying to protect and grow Scottsville and invite other people in. Scottsville's a fantastic place. Everybody I've ever asked about it, when I've told them that I'm moving to Scottsville, they're like, I love that place. It's great. Oh, the, you know, Tavern on the James and the river and this and that. I mean, the, it's a fantastic place that we're all trying to create and protect in the future. So I, I don't want to come across as an angry bitter guy, but at the same time, you know, I'm looking at my family and my, my perspective and it just seems like I'm gonna be left holding the bag here. Uh, and so, anyway, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next.
Hey, hey, one last thing, one last thing, sorry. Uh, I was, I was keeping track of everybody and it's, it's sixteen, sixteen people have spoke against nine, well now, sorry, seventeen including me have spoke against nine, four. And that kind of, you know, I watched the previous one and it, it was about a two, two to one against uh, ratio. So I just was tracking that for this specific meeting. So, thank you again.
Okay, who is Mr. Tom?
Uh, yes, there's one on video. We've got somebody raising their hand on the screen.
I would like to speak.
Okay, yeah, give us your name and location, please.
My name is Brenda Kelly and I live up on Confederate Street. And I was born and raised here and I just want to also voice my opinion that I'm, I'm totally against apartments. Um, everything that's been spoken here about the traffic, the um, you know, needs of the um, rescue squad, fire department, uh, all of that. And James really said it well. I mean, for someone that just is mov- moving here. And I think that's what I've heard for so many people that that's why they come here, because this is a small town. And I was looking through the Scottsville website today and to promoting the new businesses in Scottsville, I, I would like to read some of that to you. It says that Route twenty through town has daily traffic around eight thousand, mostly commuters headed to Charlottesville. Eight thousand cars coming through here. Okay, so that, that's probably coming and going. But then it also said our value proportion is to offer a distinctive small town character. And so we're talking about two hundred and five apartments, thirty-six houses there, possibly seven hundred over in behind Paulette Town. And then also, the other thing I wanted to mention is that Tiger Fuel has purchased the Dawson Lane. And I know he's, they're going to be building some businesses there. And so there's gonna be some more increase of income probably from that, but nobody's ever mentioned that. And then someone else mentioned the sewer and I listened to the meeting, uh, your last meeting. And um, Almar County Service Authority did not mention the sewer. They just mentioned the water. So I was a little concerned about that. Um, but I just, I really want to voice my opinion that I really think it will be a mistake. And even though you're getting this money that might help you, what's gonna happen ten years down the road? So that's, that's mine. My neighbor's here and she won't talk, that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I know you all have a hard decision to make and I really appreciate you all letting us speak our, you know, our, our voice to this.
You're always welcome. Have any more over there? Okay, anybody else in the audience here wish to speak? If you do, come forward. You have you have a couple of minutes left on your five.
Originally I talked about, I don't think you should vote, delete the vote, and I don't think you should. Get away happy, vote people aren't best here, you know, just get in the game. But aside from that, I talked a little bit about why business isn't thriving in Scottsville. I just talked with Mayor Thacker ten years ago. I think if I wanted to bring money to Scottsville, the problem is the architectural review board and suggest that I made at the time is they should go to these buildings and say, we will allow this, we won't allow this ever and let these landowners know what they're doing. I suggested a tax on vacant buildings so that it's forgiven if they actually rent it out. Bring income in. But I'm gonna tell you two other things about time. I own a farm at one where the fossil put in, where the, where the fossil put in drop off, put you from the choose. I went down Almarle County and I let people use it, use my land. I went down Almarle County and tried to make it so that I could have a fleet to take a piece of that and turn it into my property in part four of that. Our supervisor for this area, we didn't even come down and look at it. The county put roadblock in front of me until I finally sent him a letter that I'm doing and F you. Won't come happy, I'm gonna come back at the model. That's what they let me do. The other thing that I tried to do is CSX. And I have land in Howardville right next to the railroad track today. I'm invested in it. I tried to make a deal with CSX for their land here to do a swap, so they can store their stuff there in Howardville, right at the railroad tracks. Um, because there's something to put playing, we can use that land for us and let people have access to the river. A lot of people don't know this, you can only use the, the boat ramp area down there for boats. You can't go down there and do a swap. Okay? The town, Nancy Gill tried to work a little bit with CSX, CSX, put a little roadblock and that's the first thing they do. Nobody ever pushed further. I don't have the ability to push it further. I would want to just do a real estate exchange or a dollar lease. I'll lease this for a dollar, the lease that for dollars, want to help out the town. These are the kind of things that they need to do instead of taking bribes from, from, or taking money from developers who won't come here. Okay, and the other thing, guys, if I'm about running out of budget, these people aren't gonna be here before twenty twenty-four. So you're gonna run out of time before they get here. Okay, so that's just mine. Okay, so that's all I want to say.
So I already spoke a lot, I'm not gonna steal a lot of
Quickly.
But if you don't make a decision tonight, if you want to continue to discuss it, I would like to see a question and answer session moderated by um, facts. Whoever would be the arbiter of those facts, because I continue to hear this information. So it would be nice that there is, you know, I was gonna hold up a false sign or
I was gonna bring that up here in a minute after we finish the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. This would?
Hey, my name is Sarah Woods. I live down on Blom Road. Um, I am mostly speaking as a devil's advocate point of view that there aren't two choices. There are three or more, um, in the sense that you can push this out. You could ask somebody to come back with a new proposal if you deny this one. And that's always an option that the And that's always an option that the developer could have. You deny this one, you ask them to come back, if they come back, they come back. So there are multiple different options available. I also want to remind everybody that previous discourse is a big part of the history of this area. Thomas Jefferson, he really fostered that idea of talking amongst people. And what I'm saying today is something that's new to Echelon, I've had conversations with them. They're willing to wait if people wanted to wait. It's also worth the community remembering that whatever choices or votes that happen are done so with constituents in mind. So people are making their choices based on conversations that they've had outside of this area and outside of this room too. So, to foster hostility in one way or the other, to use words like crazy or things like that, that really kind of comes in and creates a division and unlocks the community. So decisions are made based on constituents and I just want to remind everybody of that. Some information I walked through, I had the chance to walk through the facility with Charlie. And one interesting note that I thought was when I asked him, would they consider other proposals for apartments? He said, nothing is ever off the table in real estate. So again, nothing is a A or B, a black or white, there's always gray. So, that's worth keeping in mind as well. It's going to take a while, I don't know if people have been through there, but it's going to take a while to clear that out.
Just to clean it out, yeah.
I've been showing photos, it's taking a while before it's made into an industrial park. It's going to take a while before it's made into apartments. I don't envy your decisions tonight, but I know that everybody's going to make the most informed choices that they have based on the conversations that they've had with the community. So I do want to thank you all. I just want to kind of offer it out there that there's been a lot of conversation about black and white choices and decisions made. Scottsville's population hasn't decreased as immensely as people are making it seem. Actually, it's more or less on track to continue to grow. We had that conversation during the Bird Street development debates. We've also had the conversation and a lot of people have brought up that they are actually amenable to having a tax of some sort because it used to be in place in Scottsville and it disappeared for a while. Other communities in Virginia, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, other successful growing communities have both. I used to pay Montgomery County and Christiansburg when I lived down there. I'm a lifelong resident of this area. I want to see it be successful no matter what happens. It's just know that, you know, I respect you all for the choices that you all make. I just hope that everybody can be overall civil and there are a lot of different opportunities available. It's not a black and white decision no matter how you look at it. And for information and purposes, if you did consider having that community conversation would be really beneficial if you decide to go that way. If not, so be it. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Anybody else? It's already spoken, it's already spoken. Quick Harold, we're getting towards the ten o'clock hour. Real quick.
Consider that people enter all the light, it will be moving in. That's very important. And compare that quality of life, what people here have now, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you Harold. Yes, Chris, you want to speak? Or are you leaving?
Hi, my name is Chris Wade. If you didn't know it before, it rhymes with dismay. Because when I left the house tonight, which is on Orange Street, I was determined that I was not saying anything. So I am truly dismayed. And I'm going to ramble, I'm sure, because there are so many things that have been said you know, need to be thought about. So I made some notes. First of all, I'm another one of those Californians. But I came here when Walter Townsend, where'd you go Walter? I came here, my wife and I came here when Walter was three years old. So we've been here a long time. So, seventy-four. So, I have three kids who've gone through Scottsville Elementary School. Two of them came home from the hospital when they were born to Scottsville. One came to Scottsville when he was two. They've all left Scottsville. You know, I should, I meant to say at the beginning, I do not intend to speak in favor of or against any decision. I'm just mentioning a few things that I think need to be, need to be said. The history, somebody mentioned Scottsville School Apartments. Maybe it's Mr. Unsworth. I was here when that was being invaded. And I heard people saying things like, we didn't want those kind of people here. My mother, who was living at that time, would have been eligible to live there. Then there was Mayor Thacker's boundary adjustment. How many of you been here since the boundary adjusted? That avoided an annexation because of lawsuit that runs jurisdiction files against the other. That was worked out in discussion and listening to people, just as this will be. So I think that was an important thing to keep in mind. I work with the Bread of Life Food Bank Distribution. Two days a month, that's not a whole lot. Specifically at the Scottsville Fuel Apartments. So I know almost all the residents fairly well, I know by name. They're good folks. You know, one of them pulled firearms too many times, you know. We had a food bank distribution that day. We were in the hall with that going off. And, you know, it didn't work. That's, you know, some people do things well. It reminded me of an MRI recently, recently. What I've heard today is some fear. Some irrational fear, some legitimate fear, some legitimate concerns. And I've also heard facts and figures being offered. These are important. I don't envy the council, the position of needing to make decisions. I was on the architectural review board here for most of ten years. Artist chair. And I really felt, you know, how hard it is to be in a position of making decisions that people's lives and money. We had one proposal. The people said, we've already spent twenty thousand dollars on engineering and plants. And it didn't fly, it was so far outside the, the town's own planning dossier. That it could not be improved. They did something else, it worked out. I'm sorry, B Maxwell left a little while ago. Because I was going to say, in the late seventies, early eighties, every time Maxwell saw me on election day, he'd say, are you running? I would say I am running as fast as I can. I would not, you know, have the guts frankly, to sit at that podium. I hope going forward that we can take this clash of differing opinions that we've had and get a spark of truth out of it. We have people going this way, people going that way. But today, tonight, everybody has spoken at a moderate pitch. Not counting some of the clapping. But we, we've worked together. We've heard a lot of facts, figures, opinions and preferences and hopes and practices and dreams. I hope that we can all work together to find some unity to make the best that happens for this town. And this is going to be what you guys have to do up there. Sunday was an event called World Religion Day where various religions of the world are celebrated. And one of the interesting things on that Zoom was the three, what did they call themselves? A few medical friends anyway, there was a rabbi, a priest and a mosque. And they spoke as a group. And it was very entertaining besides everything else. But one of the things that they pointed out is that everybody's true, it's true. One principle. The other thing is, the rabbi said, is there anything I could say that would change your mind? And the guy said, the one of the outside person, he said, no. He said, well, there's nothing you can say that would change my mind. So let's talk. Let's have a conversation. And I think the town and surroundings have been doing that really well for months. And maybe it'll continue for more months now. That's always a possibility. That's all.
Okay, thank you Chris. Anybody else that has not been to the podium? Anybody else on Zoom anywhere? And I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would like to make a motion.
At this time, I would like to interrupt you for just a moment to say this. Please, Mr. Payne, I'm chairman, I'll let you know when you can speak. It's been, been brought up by several people tonight that we need more information. We need to have more discussion. We need to have another get together. This is the public hearing. We can vote on this thing tonight. We can put it off for a month. And I would like to see us do something like we did with Bird Street and have a whole day downstairs with the developers here and three sessions with public invited to any one of the three sessions to ask any questions they want to ask directly to the developers. Now, that's, that's what I would like to hear a motion on tonight. So that's what I had to say about that. If, if somebody up here wants to make a motion now, they're certainly welcome to make it.
I would like to make a motion to deny rezoning request and special recommit application for eighty hundred third street for interventions for the old town factory. Although yes would need that you deny the request.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Payne's motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Alex, you have taken this motion and seconded it now. We are open for discussion among ourselves up here on this and I will open the, the discussion, yes, Mr.
I, I would like to actually respond to two things, not related to this permit, but the ARB in the Riverfront. For the last five years, I've served as the chair of the ARB and not once have we stood in the way of a business opening in this town. And in fact, you've gone a long way to improve how this town functions and communicates with its owners of historic properties. Number two, I live across the street from that waterfront, I look at it every day and I hear the train whistle. In fact, I don't hear the train whistle anymore, I've heard it some other times. And my house has cracks in the walls from all the rum. And I watch the trees die every day. Because every spring, they spray herbicide up and down that thing. And I've had the pleasure of standing on that riverbank with members of the DEQ, their operations manager, as well as their public relations man, Mr. Randy Marcus, who I've had invited to this meeting twice in my term as counselor. They don't want to do nothing. In fact, they don't mind so much that they spray herbicide in the river when it's at eighteen feet cruising right by where those trees are. Now, if you've got a plan to move into Howardsville, I invite it. Because that's where it needs to go. Because we've got a scenic river out here. In fact, it's designated as such by the state of Virginia, but it gives us zero power except for whether or not we can build a bridge across it.
Do you have the ability to communicate with legislators all the way to the governor's office?
They don't do anything. Because the railroad is federal. The Federal Railroad Authority is who responds. And more importantly, CSX, if they, they don't want to do it. They don't even want to fix their train station, rated poor by the ARB. Fix your train station, twelve billion dollar company. What do they say instead? We don't want to pay to have our union boys come out there and pay and fix it. So what do they do instead? They give us a grant for four thousand dollars. Know what it's going to cost? Forty thousand dollars. So, thank you. So I just want to respond to that. And that someone up here has been, I, thank you.
I think we're getting off the point here.
So what do we do? I don't know, we'll talk about over beer later. But what I want to respond to is more related to some of the concerns here too. Which has to do with our revenue mechanism. And for me, we do have a choice here. We have heard from Southern Homes, who now is the owner of the Dr. Hurt properties. We know that Echelon is their preferred option for renovating that site. We know that what's going to go in there is an industrial park, they've got it teed up. They, they're going, they need to make money on this thing fast to make it profitable for themselves, they're going to do it. They're going to do it. So I'm not, in fact, when I toured with, what's the name there? Charlie, Charlie Armstrong. But that was the first thing I asked, that was all I wanted to know actually. All I wanted to know is what happens if this is an apartment? Contractor yard, industrial use buy right, because it's easy for them, they don't have to do any work and it's done. And they don't have to do this process anymore and they're going to make, find money doing it. So, I, I don't want industrial use over there. There's nothing that this town has planned for over the last five years, including with you and Dan on this board. Five years, staff time, UEA expertise, community input, especially with the small area plan over here on the west side of town. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent in planning, the Waukesha study, all of which tease this up that we are ready to go. So, the, in terms of people commenting, we have not done our due diligence. We have done our due diligence and I have sat here through all of it. In fact, four of us up here have sat through all of it, including Mr. Heisen, who was chair of the planning commission when we did the small area plan. And I will quote the small area plan. The small area plan asked for rezoning the factory site for mixed use in partnership with Almarle County and prospective developers who we have here this evening. Ensuring regulatory due diligence, environmental study, done that. Flood map amendment, done it. Trap impacts the analysis and safe access, done it. Promote and support the private sector construction of homes on the factory hillside, did that last year. We are doing the work that this council and this community sets out to do. See people shaking their head back there. One of the others, so coming back to this revenue mechanism. When we're talking about how we're going to pay for this stuff, like police, because I know Chief Jenkins suggested, and he's probably right, that we're going to need to bring on another full-time or part-time staff member when these things open up. I do not deny that being a reality. We've also talked about property taxes here tonight. We will probably need to do a property tax of some kind going forward to remain fiscally solid. And the minimum recommendation is ten cents, ten cents on per hundred dollars, what have you. That really changes the calculus for what the project will pay to the town. So with that ten cent property tax, which is probably imminent, and I'm sorry if I'm breaking that news to the town residents here this evening. That is probably coming. Changing nothing. Change no new businesses. Just putting that property tax on that factory as a redeveloped commercial site. And by the way, it'll be mixed use, five thousand square feet of commercial gym or something around. That will increase That will increase the net profit of that development to one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to this town, that's in my lawless report. One hundred and seventeen thousand dollars net to this town, that is a full-time police officer plus. And that, that, that's just from the property tax, I haven't even gotten to the proper. Two hundred thousand dollars right off the bat for road improvements. With that industrial site, zero dollars for road improvements, guess what we're gonna need anyway? Road improvements, thank you so much, and if this tip goes through, which is associated with affordable housing, which the county is eager to do. Tiff, so they're gonna, the county is gonna pay these guys for the difference between the market rate. And what they're charging with the affordable rate. They're estimating that's gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to the town, over ten years, two point five million, guess what that's for? I'll name some things that are important to us tonight, um, sidewalk and crosswalk construction. We turned down a V doc grant that we won two years ago because we didn't have the cash for it, this would give us the cash to do it. Renovation and expansion of the volunteer fire hall. Right in there, eventual replacement of aging flood control pumps downtown. So when I'm looking at the budget and I'm looking at town services, I'm looking at our goals. I know our businesses need, need people, I don't mind some new neighbors. Those men over there on the wall, that's the county town council of nineteen ten, nineteen ten, the population of this town dropped to two hundred and eighty-three people. They took out advertisements in the Richmond Times dispatch and said, bring your homes and bring your businesses to Scottsville. We're not afraid of city dwellers moving to Scottsville, ten years later, the population's twelve hundred. Five times bigger in ten years. I think this town can handle twelve hundred people, I bet this town could handle seventeen hundred people in fifteen years. That's the tradition I serve in. Those are the, and Mr. Uh, who's my voice there, Mr. Moon? I live on one of his old properties. I got a special affinity for that guy because I live on one of his old parcels. Yeah? So that, that's what we're looking at. I want to live in a town with businesses and neighbors, I want to live in a town that's solvent and this is investing in itself. This is our plan to do it, is it perfect? No, but we're not gonna get one, you never do. And the longer we sit around hemming and hawing about what it could be or couldn't be, we're gonna miss this thing. I like this thing, I think these guys do good work, I was talking. Hey. I, I, I'm explaining where I'm at, I'm not trying to change your mind.
Your audience will remain silent.
I'm just trying to explain why I'm doing what I'm doing. And I'm thinking about the town, I'm thinking about the businesses here, there with people who live here, I'm thinking about our roads. How we're gonna pay for the things that we need to provide, including public safety. That's what I am thinking about. So I'll leave it there for now, for others to comment or ask some questions.
What's the projected uh tax revenue in our current tax system that this will bring, it's under meals tax and cigarette tax and whatever it may be. And how much was the last police car that we bought?
About that.
About that? Okay, so I'm definitely here as another police officer. I don't think uh. I don't think this is the right move, I'm just gonna say that, but I'll refer to you guys.
Uh, if I could comment at this point, first of all, I want to thank you fellow councillor Bullock. And I, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight and I, I really do think. That ultimately, we as a town and this region. Have an opportunity to make a choice and I think that choice has been. I, I, I think our planning commissioner chair makes a point that there's both. Understanding of the choice and also misunderstanding of the choice. And I'm not saying that in a negative way, that can go both ways, people who are for it or people who are against it can have. Understanding, one of the things that I appreciate about what everybody said tonight, actually took notes on what every one of you said. And I would personally like the time to review what you said because I don't think we need to rush to vote it down tonight. I think there's wisdom in us as a town, whether it gets voted down a week from now or a month from now or whenever. I don't have a magic wand to change people's opinion, but I do have the opportunity to make sure that people understand the choices in front of us. So to come back to a conversation we had last week. Last week, I found it very insightful, we were given a document that talked about. The need for housing, we have a national need for housing. We have a state need for housing, we have a county need for, and we have a regional need for housing. And the, in terms of affordable housing, eight point seven million people in the United States live in cities. That have housing assistance, one point five million live in rural areas and they receive. Between forty eight point five billion dollars in that assistance, in Virginia. That's a hundred and six thousand households and eighty-six thousand receive low income housing tax credit. What that means is it provides for a tax incentive to construct or rehabilitate affordable rental housing. For low income households, the low income housing tax credit subsidizes the acquisition. Construction and rehabilitation of affordable rental housing for low and moderate income tenants. As we think as a town and as we think as a region. It's absolutely certain, with, last week, we had housing advisors here. And they said, one of the ladies actually said, I could get a thousand apartments rented. And I said, you merely mean that? And she said, well, no, I don't mean a thousand, but she said the needs of those. To rent apartments is dramatic, it's dramatic in our county, it's dramatic in the counties around us. So, okay, so is the old tire factory the right place to meet that need? Is it the right place? And I'm gonna come back to that in just a second. But what, I want to say this first again. It's also not an easy choice, and when you say not an easy choice, I know some out there. And I, I, I do put this in the category of having had the opportunity to have numerous conversations with both companies involved. So Southern, the development company, that developers. Are the owners of the property that is what Dr. Hurt's property was. And to be technical, that process is a moving process, but they're the owners. Echelon is the company that's brought in for this specific project. Whatever happens with Echelon, Southern isn't going anywhere, they're here. And in the conversations with Southern, which I've had, I don't even know, maybe a dozen conversations. Because I wanted to be factual in this conversation, they have absolutely made it clear, it really is a choice of one or the other. They themselves have said that, I'm quoting them, not me. And in that conversation, they have basically said, if we have this opportunity in front of us. They have one choice, which is the apartments, the other choice, which is the buy right choice. Of having an industrial park and you've heard that described, Mr. Hurt has been here before and described it. One of the reasons I mention it is because there really is a misunderstanding and I heard it, I heard it on. A number of places, I've heard it directly from people and I've had to counter it. This old factory that opened in nineteen forty-four by the effort of the mayor, the town council and the Lions Club. That was the pride and joy of Scottsville, it was a place that had over three hundred people worked there for sixty-four years. That factory, when it went quiet in two thousand nine. It was not gonna stay quiet forever and it was going to come back at some point. Ever since I've been on town council since two thousand ten, every single town council has talked about how can we have this factory reopen? We would have been happy six or eight years ago to have the industrial park, that will happen if we vote this down tonight. You can be certain, in fact, and I will say this as a town councillor. I chose not to fight the resolution, I thought it was better to have the opportunity to vote it down. In other words, tonight, we have an opportunity to, as town councillors, to simply say tonight. We don't want to vote this down because either, I personally would like to take more time and review everybody's information. I would like a further, wider community conversation and I would like the opportunity to clear up. Misunderstanding that is evident and what a number of people were saying, again, it's just. Out there and I'm only saying that to say it's on both sides, whether people are for it or against it. Having the opportunity as a town councillor, I've tried to do the best I could to present accurate information to people and I am a flawed person also. So simply, I, what I'm suggesting tonight is that. I think the reason I would vote against it tonight. Would, in other words, I don't think we should end this tonight, is we need more information, there's still a lot of misunderstanding of our town. We are not in a rush to end this and the issue of affordable housing and housing. Is really a critical issue in this mo, this, it, it directly impacts me personally, one of my children wanted to live in Scottsville. Kevin Quick was their real estate agent, he couldn't find him a house in Scottsville that they could afford. I had a son just the other day have to move from one area. To another area, making the choice, when people make choices for where they live, they choose by cost. They choose by the proximity to where they live, they also choose by the proximity of where they want to spend their time. So when we think about where we as a town decide. Are we going to allow this unique opportunity? And to come back to the, I, I think it was, I don't think it was intended to be explained this way by some people in the crowd. But I think it, I think it's helpful to understand, from what I understand from the owners of, this is Echelon, when they go. And they work on this factory, it really isn't practical to have part of it open and part of it closed. It's, you wouldn't want to be there in that circumstance, it's either they're gonna come in and they're gonna do the work on this large building. Raise your hand if you've been in that building, who's been in the building? So if you've been in that building, who's been in there in the last year? So if you've been in that building, you see, as Sarah said, the enormous amount of stuff that's in the building. I, I reckon the building as if it was in the Raiders of the Lost Ark when they stored the ark. And in fact, I think it, it might even be in there right now, it's such, it's filled with so much clutter. And what I have learned in research is if the industrial park option happened, so tonight if we vote it down. It would take about, most likely about a year and a half would be the timeframe where it would open as an industrial park, could be as long as two years. In terms of understanding of how long it would take for it to open as apartments. That's more three and a half, four years, th- that timeframe. And when we as a town think of the infrastructure issues, so how do we deal with these issues? Very legitimate issues of the fire department, very legitimate issues on anything you can think of, whether it's emergency services, the police. The schools, the library, every, everything that you've all mentioned, well, those things don't, it doesn't happen overnight, first of all. It's not that two, two hundred and five apartments are people that are moving in tomorrow. They would be moving in three or four or five years from now, could Scottsville be ready for that? Is it possible that we as a town could look at it and say, this is what we want to do as a town? One of the things I have always said, as a town councillor for my part. I always think, to me, it's about the future, it's about the next generations, it's about children, it's about grandchildren and I very much. Respect people who've grown up in the town and people who've lived their whole lives here. At the same time, Scottsville is a town that's been around for hundreds of years. The history of this town is gonna long outlive any one of us in this room, the question is, are we preparing for it? Are we thinking about the future in a way that helps us to plan? Is this the right time to do something like this? Sometimes when things present themselves, it might not be the most opportune time. I myself, when I first heard about it, I thought, wow, that's a lot of apartments all at once. As I thought it through, did the research, went into the building, looked it through, talked about it with the industrial, uh, with uh, the owners. I realize we really do have two choices, because I will, I will challenge you to say this, why would the owners? Come back to this town council right now with a different proposal? I, I don't know how to answer that question, I don't think they would, I don't think they would, yes.
Because they are planning on building thirty-six houses right there. And to make this industrial park sound like such a bad idea and such an unappealing option. And something that nobody would possibly want, why would they do that? Right next to the thirty-six houses they are hoping to build and sell.
That's a legitimate, so, so let me just say this, I think that's a legitimate thought, but I'm gonna, I'm, I'll answer that and say. So in, in talking to them, they're a business, this is a, this is a, this place, the. The factory was a functioning factory for sixty-four years. And as many of you who said, who are familiar with it, when it was a functioning factory, when the trucks traveled from that site. They're a business, so right now, they have an opportunity, they have an opportunity either. To build apartments, which is why they chose and, and, and went with Echelon. Or they have an opportunity to go the buy right use and, and I will say again. The conflict of building houses in that area, that I think is a very debatable point. In other words, I don't think it's a given point, as you might say that is, in other words, if that's a functioning industrial park and they're using Bird Street. That, is it a conflict? Yes, it is a conflict, but is it? Now that they own this building that is the largest structure in Scottsville, that has been unused for, I, what, thirteen years? That building now has the opportunity to be opened and from a business standpoint, if I was a business person, I would open it. I would open it one way or the other. I mean, that's what businesses do, that's what businesses do.
It's as horrible. As everyone's being led to believe for an industrial park to go in there. In which case, it will. Greatly impact their ability to sell those houses that they will be building. Or it's not, but it, but if it's, you know, if it's what we're being led to believe it is. I don't think it's their only option, you can come back with another, with another plan that is more workable. That provides more mixed use, the, the fifty thousand square feet. Wa- was thrown as, in an, as an afterthought at the November planning commission meeting. Because it was very clear that it was not gonna pass planning commission unless there was a mixed use.
I think that's fair, I think that's fair.
Come back with a better mixed use plan, more, more business, less apartments. Or don't make it an industrial park, in which case it's not gonna be that bad. Because if it is as bad as we, you know, are being told that those thirty-six houses won't sell. And I get it, it, it's a business, so he wants to build that building, they want to build that building, with all their respect. I don't think they're gonna fill it with something that is gonna prevent those thirty-six houses from being sold.
I think you make a good point, the only thing I would say maybe to follow up with it, and maybe I should be clear about. I don't see the industrial option as a horrible option, I think, I think it's a fine option and I mean, I'll say that, I do think if it opens up. Having, thinking of it this way, it's the largest building in town, it's been out of use for thirteen years. Southern has told us, they've, again, in the dialogues with them, like I said, I've talked to them numerous times because I wanted to be accurate about this. They found that it is a type of industrial park that's a lower level one, it's not one that's gonna be along eighty-one. It's not one that's in Dines Crossroad, it's one that can be in an area that will have a lower amount that they can charge. And it will function and it will be an oper, it will operate very effectively. And it probably, by my estimation, in terms of, again, trying to understand it. There is some benefit to the town by having that opportunity to have those workers coming in and using the site. And having the road again back in use. I, what I'm saying to you is, it's not, they're not saying it as a threat, that's just what, that's just the practical understanding of it. I, even, like I said, in the conversations I had with them, understood, I'm, I was trying, I wanted to understand. It started even with a conversation I had with Matt, number, many months ago and I said, Matt, let's understand this out, okay? If, if the apartments don't happen, what is gonna happen there? And that process of doing the research, of checking, of talking to multiple sources, so that being said, I'm not Southern. But they've made it very clear. They are gonna go, they want to go this option, they think it's the best for Scottsville and I agree with them, I think it is the best for Scottsville to have the apartments. But they have another viable option and that viable option is an option that. Will be able to be done because it's a buy right use and, and that, the other thing I'll say back to the county. The county also doesn't have industrial space, industrial spaces is needed, this is a lower level. So it's not the high level stuff that you would have bringing in a much higher level company, but it is a place that. They see where it would be contractors, that's the level that it is, so I just want to make sure the people of Scottsville understand, I'm not, I'm not. But I don't have the, all the, the cards in form, but in terms of anything I understand or what we've done. If this gets voted down in a very mail, what, very well may get voted down. Don't be surprised if the process of moving it to an, into an industrial park happens. And if you're a contractor out there and you're looking for. Where to. Have your stuff stored, you will have that opportunity, because that's gonna happen. Again, I don't think it's a bad thing. I just don't think it's anywhere near as good as what it would be to have the apartments. And I think you need to be, to clearly understand. Because I think there's a big miss of understanding out there that people think they can just come back with some other option. I don't think that's accurate.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just wanted a couple points. Uh, first of all, I think they, I don't need more information. I think, uh. They have done a superb job marketing promotion. I mean, I've got weeds material, I read a lot of it, and I got bullet hints that, and it's supported by this, that, and the other. So I I I'm impressed with that, and I am impressed with some of the things they've done. Uh, but, uh, it's just like, you can buy a car, it's just not the right product. You know, it just doesn't work here. Uh, it might be living in a, in a, a different area. It's too urban, too big. It's not who we are. It's a town. Scottsville, we are, we gotta go to Scottsville, is the, is the coolest place. I'm not, I was born here. I chose to come here. And, uh, I I just think it's just remarkable place. And and the people who here, who are here. Are just, you know, typical working class, middle class people trying to living. And like them, the town has to work, live within its means. You can't, uh, we. I don't think this thing should be driven by money. You know, money is is important, of course it's not. We gotta, I don't think it should be driven by fear. You know, fear of, oh, here come the, here come the semis, here come the bulldozer. People are stopped in the streets saying, you know, is this gonna happen? If they read the Walker Shaw report of the small area plan. It's so remote that that could happen. It could happen. But I was about the smaller planet and and and. I am disappointed that this project never, uh, never referenced the smaller planet. We came up with, we had a group of citizens try to figure out what to do with the, with the, with the plant. There were three or four models we came up with. The primary model was a medical, a medical office, fifty apartments, maybe a few other things, maybe a gym or something. Every one of those models said, second access. You have to have a second access. We're gonna put all these, uh, cars and trucks or whatever it is, and a cul-de-sac. And and think that's good for Scottsville. You know, we gotta do it. So anyway, I just, I think this, anything that does, that happens in this town should be, not to be by money. Or fear, but by community. And I think you always have to look at community first and and what's good for the community. And to me, just listen to people. Even the people who supported this. There's just too, too many disruptions. Too many things that that we'd have to fix later, bring it and fix later. I just think it's, uh, it's not the best model. I like what Sarah said. Bring it back to the drawing board, come back with something, work with us first, not afterwards. You know, I, the. The way it's supposed to work is, they're supposed to go to, you know, they have these community meetings. What do you want in your town? And ask people what they want, instead of just imposing on us. I'm going, I'm sorry. But I, I, I have strong feelings about the way it's done. And and this whole fear factor of, of, you know, growing out this gospel industrial park, you know, right before public hearing. And it could have been done fifteen years ago. And it's never done. And and the developer never did it, because if you look at the report. It costs a lot of money. It's not the right place. And it's just that, and there's just now. We don't need factories, we need service. I mean, we're a service provider. So anyway, I, I'm really, uh. Uh, I guess. This, anyway, maybe this is better.
Anyone else have anything they wish to add? Is that for the official record?
I, I think the only thing I'd like to say, I'm a justice, I'm a counsel, but. After a dozen meetings. The planning commission meetings. TV, radio. Daily progress, small periodicals, websites, social media. People come to my home, I have phone calls or delete mails. I do not need your information. I really don't. I'm up to you with information. So, uh. I think the public had a chance. Using, you know, any method I can special to find out anything they want to. Uh, that is available, information that's available also. And I, I know I have, so. I made a motion to, uh, deny the application.
Mr. Mayor before, thank you.
And, uh, I'm just, oh, there's a vote.
Just, I would like to say one more thing. Uh, so. Just, this is more to the citizens and then back to the town council. I just wanna say again, citizens, thank you. For your input, and I think it was really well stated by our last speaker there. As a town. Listening to each other, understanding and making good public policy. Is about the opportunity to do that. And I, I am excited that. You care enough about the town, you care enough about this region to come. And fellow town councillors. You've heard me gripe a couple of times about the process, and I, we will talk about that more in the future. This is an opportunity for us to. Make our. Vote on the record. And as we do that, I think it's helpful to. Recognize our differences and at the same time, respect each other in that and look forward to. Having an opportunity to. Revisit aspects of this as they. Present themselves.
Make one other point. I, I did a little research about the apartments in that. You know, because I think we, we do need apartments. I don't think we need a hundred or two hundred apartments, but we think we need apartments. And, you know, Scottsville right now has fifty three percent of our dwellings are rentals. In Virginia, the average is thirty five percent. If we had two hundred and five, we have seventy percent rentals in this town. And I, I think that's not a community. So if we do come back, or they do come back with something, I, I'd like to see actually some kind of many. Or maybe some small houses, but, uh, not necessarily two hundred. You know, narrow kind of thing, but just apartments.
Anyone else? I was just gonna. Mention a couple of things, not that it is going to sway anybody, but I have, ever since the plant closed. I have been, I've been asked a hundred times, when are you all gonna do something with the plant? Well, it wasn't our property to do anything with, so when this. Proposal came along, that's the, well, that's one question that's gotten answered. And then recently, within the ca- last couple of years, we've been getting the questions, we need more apartments. We've even gone to the extent of denying. Property owners' requests to turn a vacant in par- apartment into an Airbnb because we don't have enough apartments. So that's something that this project would address also. What happens when we bring a bunch of new families into town? They. Go to our churches, they support our businesses, they get involved in the community, such as volunteer firefighters. They volunteer for things like Van Cleef and town committees. Uh, it's also brings new businesses into town, which increases our B poll tax revenue. When we had the, the situation, when the, there was some ugliness directed towards the then. Planning Commission Chairman or Liaison Chair. We. Formulated a document that was a resolution in which we said, we had, we advertised ourselves as a welcoming community. And, and you know, this. Doesn't sound like we're all that welcoming to some, something new. It's like come and eat here and then go home. Projects like this would, uh, support, uh, give, give work to local craftsmen during the construction phase. And it fits in with the governor's housing initiative. It's funny that, that, uh. Zach had mentioned the figure seventeen hundred. This is the nineteen seventy eight comp plan. Nineteen seventy eight comp plan says ample opp- ample opportunity for residential expansion has been shown on the future land use plan map. To accommodate the population projection of seventeen hundred and fifty people. By the year two thousand. And then it breaks down lower density, medium density, and higher density. Higher intensity residential is four hundred and thirty units. So. That was nineteen seventy eight. Of course, the plant was still going strong then, but, uh. Times change, things change, we have to change with it. But that was all I was, I was going to mention. I personally think it's, it's a. Pretty good deal for the town, but unless there's a tie vote, I don't get to vote. So I'll ask the clerk, gives no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call for the vote.
Just, just one thing, can you clarify, so clarifying where.
If you vote yes, you're, uh, you're, you're killing the plant, the project. Right? Okay. The motion is to deny the request, so if you vote yes, you're denying the request. If you vote no, you're not denying the request. Echelon, wish you make any additional comments?
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
Massive.
Yes.
No.
Chriska?
No.
Hi.
Yes.
I said?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
So, like I said, go back to the drawing board and come back again. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, it's ten thirty. Do we have, uh, anything we can put off?
Can we just put it off? What?
Stay five minutes here.
So you know this, in my earliest conversations with Charlie, he actually said, I said, I said, I don't know that I want us to talk too much about what we're really gonna do. Because it might sound like we're trying to scare people. They weren't, they're not trying to scare people.
Oh, the meeting is still going?
Yeah, we have more stuff. Yeah, we share that well. Four more items. Why don't you go ahead? I mean, I'll get a line with somebody. No, 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 you go ahead. I'll call you if I need to. All right, thanks.
Um, the developers.
Randy.
For them to come back. They said that they're unclear as to why. What another good proposal would be.
Right.
And so that's why.
They're not gonna come back. I wouldn't come back. I wouldn't waste my time. They've, they've done this for two years. There's nothing, there's nothing, I don't know what they would come back with. They don't have. I, I guess all I'm saying is, I, I'm not against them considering something, but. What, I think what a lot of people here don't realize is when a business has a proposal.
Like saw the block before.
I think I could sleep tonight.
There you go.
Good night. Alright. Let's get back in session here. Got about three or four more things to hit and then we can uh hit the home. Item six B prioritizing town website upgrades, do you wanna take the lead, Mr. Heison on that?
The government should be talking about that, we have various, various uh. We talked about supporting the website, so my motion is to approve five thousand dollars. Allocated busy with updating the town website. Eileen Morris's website committee so committed sheriff's. And at her sole discretion, Eileen will advance updating of the town website at the discussion, the government service admitting. I think we'll update the town council at each month's council meeting until complete. So she's already talked a little bit about, she's really did a lot of research, she really knows websites and. There are so many needs in the websites, I, I like to make motion include the five thousand dollars for, for the town.
Let me, okay.
The, the whole ocean? Yeah. Five thousand dollars. Yeah, well, it's also. As the allocated and, and then she be the some chairperson. Uh, and she will advance and update his website. Uh, and will update the town each council meeting. So she'll, she'll do it and she'll update the town as, as she goes.
Is that, is that pay or what is? So what's the five thousand for?
Oh, because uh, she's worked with that about the, getting some of, a, a different. Even of website service, I, I don't know, especially maybe some of the others know with. Um, and also get consultation and uh. We're gonna probably change the whole format, we wanna make the now have announcement page, we wanna have event page updated. And then also have the interactive, so we can, you can go there and ask questions and find out things.
Do we have, do we have a staff recommendation, Matt, do you, is that a, do you recommend, not recommend? Or have you had a chance to look at it?
We have those funds available, be the first.
If, if it's a, if it's a council priority, we can. We can ship five thousand dollars and make it work. Um, I might advise a friendly amendment to the motion about procurement authority. That in, in your. In, in your appointed global treasurer, uh, I think they need. To keep procurement control. I think I'm responsible for supervising the permits, um, and I appreciate general services volunteering. Yes. Uh, so perhaps uh government services volunteers, uh, with deciding more some points supporting staff work here.
Well, she's, she's got, she's got her. Let's say, she's really knowledgeable about this.
So what you're saying, Matt, is we're procuring five thousand dollars, you would, you all would work together.
Instructing town procurement of the service with. Much appreciated voluntary support of that mistake.
What is the? There was something that this website that was appealing to me. The updating of our ordinances and like what. It would then be done, that would be part of the five thousand.
I don't think it's updating, I think it's just uh making it more user friendly and having more information on there and. You know, and more interactive, I think that was the main thing.
I think it was what I meant, not updated, I, I know that a website will not update our ordinance, so I sort of.
You, you want to escape into the, the. Important feature of a new website be better online hosting of all the organsis? Yeah, yes, we have that as a priority, but legal work is in progress, so we still need to figure out the best way to put it all on line.
Well, Matt, the bottom of the lot is. Uh, in your opinion, you think this would benefit shots through all? Is it a substantial improvement over the existing website?
Oh, yes, the current website is the most frequent source of complaints and I really appreciate the allocation, the update done, it's gonna run well.
Would this include the DMV as well, or is that there, or is that independent?
We could use our website to promote the DMV services, um, things like. Online manuals and payments that you might do online, still have to happen through the DMV website, but we could.
Like, so that somebody could be on our website and click and have a take, hit people directly.
Sure, to say, here's how our DMV site can help you, but if you wanted to do it online.
Matt, can I clarify, I think it's the person who put together, who tried to help with the website before, I believe you said the five thousand will be treating service providers. Cause right now the website is through WordPress, I highly recommend making this shift, ultimately, the way that the site map is working right now. Or, or it's, it's designed for the website, when I was trying to fix it, it would have had to, I would have had to do the whole thing over from scratch. The way WordPress work and the design from the design as well from the site map. So if she's doing the design for free, that's great and a super asset, but if you are also switching WordPress, I think that's a good idea as well.
So we can afford to do this?
This year's budget has five thousand.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, uh. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to call for the vote.
Yes. Abstain. Yes.
Uh, Heinz?
Yes.
Hey, yes.
Okay. Um, provision of financial policies, what is that all about?
Well, uh, we wanna have a scanning limit for uh, uh. So oversight before standing, uh, you know, we had some, some. Some spending that was out of really successful or uncommunicated, uh, the heat pump, taking days to kiosk. And uh, we like to move that, that any purchase over a thousand dollars. Shall be presented to the town council group. So that you're not, you know, surprised by, you know, just a, a purchase here or there. So, uh, and I think it, I, I just think any purchase should be communicated through the committee that's involved. Uh, but I, I'd like to, that was the government service suggested that.
What?
That every, every, there's an oversight with anything over a thousand dollars.
What is the, you know, just to ask, what's the VML, what's the standard for towns, do you know what they say? On that issue, or can we look at, see what they do, in other words, it's a standard, that, that, that kind of an amount would be a standard thing, it'd be good to know whatever that is. Generally for towns.
I've seen a variety, I don't. I can't point you up. Specific standard about that.
I, I would like, before we, before we set a number like a thousand, I would just like to see what's. The, to, to consult the VML, maybe we can come back next month and say, here's three different, you know, it's three thousand, two thousand, one thousand. I just don't wanna create something that's.
If the funds are already in the budget for a certain. Category, do we need to approve? Money that's already designated for something?
Well. Before you answer, uh, just along those lines, I, I think one of the things that is concerning with the kiosk. Then I know that there was approval for signage. For Van Cleef. But I, I think. My opinion, and speaking to a couple other people. General opinion seemed to be that it was gonna be. Signs like. Pointing towards, you know, like the entrance that create to making it more obvious that Van Cleef. Was back there, uh, how much for the, for kiosks?
Each one's a lot of thousands.
So, you know. I think. I was under the impression it would be like a few hundred dollars, and yes, there was approval for the signage and, and. Go ahead and let's put up signs. Fifteen thousand kind of shocking for, for science.
We spent twenty thousand dollars on rocks over at the boat land pools. Which I thought was excessive. And then there was, we bought a bunch of picnic tables and I'm not sure what they were, but the problem is that there is uh. Money in the budget, but sometimes it gets moved around and, and spent. Uh, there's, and I, I think somebody should, there should be a second opinion or. Town council, maybe that's in the town council, one of the town council guidelines, it says, it said that.
You, you just don't wanna tie Matt's hands, I mean, we, we set a budget with, you know, funds available in the line. And we approved the budget to be used in those ways, and then Matt reports on how they're spent, so, I mean, I, I agree that part of Matt's. Report is what's being spent and where it's coming from, but things like the boulders were budgeted, you know, we planned on the improvements down at the riverfront.
It was.
Yeah, and so. You know, I, I, I don't, I also don't wanna bog downtown councils' time either. In sort of evaluating everything, I mean, the amount of issues that are gonna, that come before this body, um, you know, if you're evaluating every check that gets written out of that front office. I'm just concerned about.
Say too, like when, when I sign checks, if I see something that looks a bit abnormal, I will ask Matt, what is this? I, I, uh, you know, if it's, if it's like, you know, forty thousand dollars or something, I was like, whoa, whoa, hold on here, what's this all about? Yeah. You know, so.
Can we, can we put this to, um. Next month so we could talk about it maybe more at.
I think that's a good idea.
Work session.
We're gonna, we're gonna look at the financial policies of government service.
It's a good, it's a good thought, really, it is, and, and.
Financial policies need to be updated, just like a lot of the other policies.
And do you mind, Matt, or, or have you here, if you get, get a VML opinion on whatever they say on the subject, cause they will say, so just. On this particular issue, so we can have that staff information.
Financial policies are figures old.
Sure.
That was in the form of a motion, wasn't it?
Yes.
Well, I think we just agreed, I think.
Was it second?
But there was a motion on the floor that was seconded.
An emotion.
Yeah, so we need to either withdraw the motion or.
We did not with the thousand dollars.
Source issue, I'll second.
Yes.
Okay, so this motion has not been seconded, alright, then this motion is dead. Um, can we do the two public hearings on the next regular council meeting in?
In the, in the, to keep and moving the other items reported out of planning conditions. Those are, those are two that have been reported that we held.
Okay, so we can do the public hearing for scan and, and Dean on the twenty first of February?
Yes, I think we also need to get more information with. With Miss Radley, she's asking, and I've heard a lot of it, I have some concerns about this. I think maybe we should at least discuss that at the work session before we. I understand that they understand what's going on with the radling properties, would they even know?
Yes.
I mean, it's.
Or maybe they wouldn't.
It's kind of, I mean, I like to support her and do, that I've heard of her, but I've also heard from others. Well, and she split up her land, you know, it was, it was commercial programs, it's, it's. I don't know, it's really confusing, but I would like to really get some more third, someone that we done nineteen, nineteen ninety seven too, so. What's the status there, I, I guess. I mean, it's nothing, but I, I'm just thinking of reality.
Let's, let's definitely do scan next month, right?
A, a, a motion for either of them would be in order, if the question's calling and.
I'd like.
Very often to, uh, to see the actual applications for both, unless you're useful, yes.
Yeah.
And maybe in the case of rarely property, although it's not far, um. Um, there may have been a recent survey done, I would like to.
Well, I was at the meeting that the prime commission uh voted to uh approve. Or give their blessings to the special use permit, and if Erin wants to speak to that, she can answer any questions you have, yeah. Okay, we'll take the podium for a minute.
Sure, what would you like me to speak to, you want me to present it or?
Just tell, tell them what they, what the special use permit is for.
Sure. So, um. Scan is requesting that the town Scottsville grant approval for a special use permit for the thirteen point one two acres on Carter Street. Currently, the land is a village residential, scan is requesting that the zoning be adjusted to arts and education. Center as, as um described in uh the special use permit. Uh, the change is, the change would be permitting. Um, allowance for arts and environmental educational programming to be accessible to the public, giving in our community. Um, at the intersection of three counties and invaluable. And there is a presentation which I can do this evening or I can do next.
Mister, you wanna do it at the work session, could we schedule the public hearing and then let, let Erin come back for the work session just to fill you in on everything?
That, that's, that's my suggestion, that's all.
Yes.
Our, our workflow has been thrown off a little bit by how busy the previous night was.
Yeah.
These two haven't had work session time yet, but my, my recommendation in the interest of keeping movements to go ahead and hold public hearings. For February one first, you've got your February work session, and I'm certainly not obligated to make a decision on February first.
Right, so let's, let's schedule both public hearings for the twenty first and discuss both of them at the work session in February.
And can you get it?
Yes. Yes, starting with the staff.
Go ahead and send everybody copies of that. Okay, so.
Currently, it's a village residential, I'm, I'm sorry, you were asking for um arts and education center.
That would be a building?
Uh, currently, no, it's just the land.
Oh.
They wanna sit down in the grass and have a program. And charge people for it.
Years ago, it, it. It was proposed to be a building, um, currently, it is just the.
So, if that's okay with you.
So the twenty first.
Twenty first for the public hearing, we'll have the uh, uh, work session the week before that, if you feel you need to add anything to it on. Thirteenth.
Lovely presentation at the November planning commission meeting. That I think would be beneficial if anybody, uh, council has not seen.
So you wanna plan on the work session in February, is that the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, the thirteenth, seven o'clock, and then you can give the presentation, everybody.
You would rather me give that for, for the work session rather than the public hearing?
Would that be better?
Yeah. I, you've done for a place.
Yeah.
Would you rather have?
What, what's the, what's more convenient for you, the thirteenth or the twenty first?
Um, well, I'd like to get it done as soon as possible.
Let's do the thirteenth.
Okay.
Okay, and then you won't have to come on the twenty first unless you want to.
Oh, it is the thirteenth.
Work session is Monday the thirteenth.
Yeah, but the following week, we have president's day, so we'll have. Yeah. Thought my math was off to you.
No, that was my understanding of federal, how I would get this off, I apologize.
Okay, what about Ms. Radley, we wanna talk about that at work session and then we'll uh go ahead and schedule the public hearing, like we said, we could hear, have it. But we don't have to vote on it that night if we've got concerns. Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, thank you.
Their copy of the survey and, um. Of course, there's really a lot of information with that property that needs to, to go out. So we can understand it before we have a public hearing where. People come in.
Sounds like plan, yeah.
It does, it does save us five hundred dollars if I can put both items on one. It does, it does save us five hundred dollars if I can put both of them on one sticker.
Okay. So let's go with staff report so we can get out of here.
Can, can you ask the question legality of that, please? Well, first off, I'm not sure if the town rules and or the county's rules have been followed by the surveys on record right now. So I'm not sure you'd be able to approve something that's not legal.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I think we should.
Hold that a meeting before all of that five hundred.
We've told it only at work session. Get the information that you need, Georgia.
Yeah. So staff reports. Okay. You, did that be two votes or one? Okay, a motion to call a public hearing for scan on Tuesday, the twenty first of February. Motion, please.
So moved.
And second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in, all in favor? Okay, that one's, that one's done. How about five twenty Valley Street, motion to have that public hearing on Tuesday, the twenty first? Second?
Right.
Any discussion? All in favor? That was quick and easy. Okay, staff reports. Any staff reports?
Family of Mr. Cody Walls is in our thoughts. Um, he is on break today and a couple more days. Um, recovering from.
Okay.
I think the rest of staff work recovery work.
Okay. And also, you know, most of you know Sonny Barnett, Ms. Barnett passed away. You see the yesterday, day before yesterday, Sonny the trash man. Yeah. She was a regular at Lions Club bingo games. I'm gonna miss her. Javier, anything you need to report?
No, I think you cover the meeting at price.
All right. Anybody else have anything they wish to speak about?
I do, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have a comment this evening. Um, tonight's vote on the, the special use permit, um, was, was a big disappointment, um, to me personally. And as a member of this body, uh, we have missed an opportunity that will not soon return if ever. Um, I am a volunteer. I got into this work because Nancy Gillan invited me up with a smile. And a nudge on the shoulder and said, this will be fun. And she was right because it was. Um, I have heard loud and clear from this community that I do not reflect its interests any longer. Nor do I reflect the interests of the counters on this day as excluding council grid scope. Um, I did not choose the problems that this town is going to inherit tonight, uh, from the decision that you all made. And you will need to find someone else who is willing to serve to solve those problems. Therefore, I am respectfully submitting resignation in the council of the town of Scottsville and all associated duties. It is signed.
Anything else? For George.